Okay, I'd like to call our meeting to order, please. A regular meeting, business meeting, which will also include a Brown Act workshop. Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. May I have a roll call for quorum, please?
Clerk Osborne?
Here.
Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Here.
Member Monteski?
Here.
President Vickers?
Here. Like to lead us in the pledge, please, Carter?
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a motion to adopt our agenda, please.
Moved.
Kelly and Jim, is there any change or addition to the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members all in favor? I oppose. Carrie's five oh. And we will begin with item four, Brown Act training. Do we have public comment on this item?
I see none.
Thank you.
All right. Well, hello, hello, everybody. I'm obviously here to talk to you about the ethics training requirements that are that are coming up that were just recently cast and then also just a Brown Act refresher. For I know a lot of you have had something similar, but we'll try and keep it fresh and make it interesting for you. All right. Without further ado, okay. So I don't know if many of you have heard, but recently there was legislation passed where now basically any elected official who receives any type of compensation is required to go through a two-hour ethics training every two years. And so this actually applies to obviously all school district board members. Regardless of whether they receive compensation, there's a specific requirement for that. And then it can also apply to other employees that are designated by the entity who who they think should receive this type of ethics training. So the requirements are pretty specific and they require a number of different things to be complied with. Specifically, the content of the particular training needs to follow certain guidelines. It has to be developed in accordance with the Fair Political Practices Commission. And the Attorney General, they do offer or they will offer an online training that you can take. But then there should likely be some other like in-person type trainings that will take place, but they're going to have to be approved by, you know, the FPPC and then also the Attorney General. When you take these trainings, they're going to give you a certificate indicating that you have completed the training. And like I said, we're going to go through some of the things that need to be included in that training because not not all of the trainings that might cover some of those topics will qualify for what is needed to be submitted. Hours in length, it covers all of the core curriculum and it was developed in consultation with the FPPC and Attorney General. If it doesn't meet all of those requirements, then it's not going to qualify for that particular new requirement. With regard to timelines, so this was a new law like I mentioned before. However, there is some time for implementation. So as of January first, two thousand and twenty-five, that's when the the training must be compared. That's when it starts and that's when you'll need to start completing the training. All of the individuals who are required to have the training must do so before January first, two thousand and twenty-six. So basically you have one year to do it. As it mentions there, if you do have a term limit and that term is coming up before that January two thousand and twenty-six time period and you're not going to be running again and need to have that certification, there would be no requirement to go through the ethics training. But otherwise, everybody will have to go through that ethics training before January first, two thousand and twenty-six. All right. With regard to the training records, the agency, the district is going to be required to maintain records of all the training for five years, which includes the date of the training and the entity that provided the training. That way, the records are good and there's not going to be any question as to whether, you know, all of the individuals who are supposed to have gone through that training. The district should identify all of the positions that they want to go through this type of training, make it very clear. That way, everybody knows what they're required to do. And then at least once a year, agencies must provide information to their local officials on available ethics training programs. That way, the, you know, the larger government is aware of what steps are being taken by the agency. All right. Does anybody have any questions on the ethics training portion? Tried to keep it fairly quick for you all, but it seems pretty straightforward. Okay. All right. Getting to the Brown Act. Okay. I know a lot of you know what the Brown Act is. Obviously, the whole purpose of the Brown Act is to make sure that, you know, government entities are not making decisions behind closed doors. They're getting the public involved. The public is aware of the decisions that are being made and they have an opportunity to make comments and sort of participate in that process. This is just a quote directly from the statute. I'm not going to read it, but it'll be in your packet in case you want to look it up later or read it now. All right. To summarize the Brown Act in a sentence, essentially, all meetings of a legislative body must be properly noticed, open and public unless a closed session is specifically authorized, provide for public participation and address only items on the publicly posted agenda. All right. So there are some key portions of this sentence and we're going to go through sort of all of them. So I'm going to point them out initially. Obviously, the first part is meetings and what is a meeting? So we're going to talk about that. We're also going to talk about what is a legislative body that is subject to the Brown Act? Obviously, the district's governing board is subject to the Brown Act as a legislative body for the district. Proper notice is again something that's statutory in nature. There's specific requirements as how many days, you know, an agenda item must be noticed, how many days a certain type of meeting must be noticed for the public, which gives the public an opportunity to, you know, get in and make any comments that they might want to make. Open to the public unless closed sessions specifically authorized. Again, all of these things fortunately are governed by statutes. I guess unfortunately, they're not always super clear and there's some gray areas sometimes. But for the most part, the general rule is that it should be open unless there's a very specific limitation that allows the district board to go into closed session and discuss a particular item. All right. And finally, and another very key point is with regard to anything that's discussed during a meeting, it should be on an agenda. The board is not allowed to discuss and make any type of decisions on things that are not properly agendized for the public. All right. So here we go. The board itself. Legislative bodies consist of more than just the board. It can include commissions, committees, other bodies of the local agency, whether permanent or temporary, if they're decision-making or advisory, and whether they're created by resolution or some other formal action of the legislative body. There are some very small exceptions to that being ad hoc or advisory committees composed of less than the majority of the board. And obviously, those are temporary committees. They're very a very specific reason they're created. And so they they aren't going to be the people who are making any type of decision. They're just going to be providing sort of some information and some findings as to to help guide the board in making their ultimate decisions. So typically, their presentations are, you know, made public to the board. All right. So with regard to what a meeting is, I mean, a meeting over the years has changed quite a bit. You know, it's gone from something as simple as really, you know, a group of people getting together to make a decision to now it can encompass everything from social media posts to, you know, serial communications between board members through emails or phone calls or some other method where you have a particular item and then voicing their opinion on that thing. And it's within the jurisdiction of the school district. So meetings doesn't necessarily mean something in person here, you know, at the table. It includes a whole lot more than that. One of the key takeaways is obviously it requires a meeting exists if a majority of the board members are basically engaging in some sort of a communication related to something within the jurisdiction of the school district. If there if there's a majority of board members talking about it and expressing opinions on it, that is going to be considered a meeting for purposes of the Brown Act. Okay? The definition of deliberate includes the collective acquisition and exchange of facts preliminary to an ultimate decision. That's very technical sounding. Really practically speaking, what it comes down to is if you have an issue that is within the jurisdiction of the district and you have board members who are talking about that and expressing any kind of view on it. I mean, it's going to be considered a deliberation for purposes of the Brown Act. Taking action doesn't even necessarily mean that they have to come to a consensus. Action taken means a collective decision by a majority of the members of the legislative body, a collective commitment to promise or promise by a majority of the members of legislative body to make a positive or negative decision or an actual vote of the body. That's the the general definition of it. But through the years and through case law, it's been expanded and it's become it's it's been given sort of a more liberal definition or interpretation of what that means. A lot of times you have simply a lot of communication going back and forth and then that results in a in a decision later and it can be considered just because the action wasn't necessarily taken when the communication was happening, it can still be considered an action for purposes of the Brown Act. So for that reason, it's always best to just avoid any type of communications that could give the appearance of a Brown Act violation, right? You don't want to be communicating either via email or telephone with a number of other board members. You want to avoid having, I mean, it's okay to have a conversation with one board member. The problem that you run into with that is you don't know if that other board member is then going to communicate with another board member, right? So if you're doing it behind closed doors and you have, you know, you speak to one board member, that board member speaks to another board member, now all of a sudden you have three board members who potentially have been expressing their views and are aware of what other a majority of the board members are thinking. At that point, we have a problem. So this is just a diagram to show sort of generally what is okay, right? One email discussion between two board members, that's okay if that's all that's happening, right? But if we move on, like I mentioned, we add in a third. Now, all of a sudden, we have a majority of the board members discussing that particular topic. Another example of an okay communication is where you have, obviously, oftentimes, Jason will provide, you know, an update to the board. They get the information about what's going on in the school district. As long as everybody's not responding to him and saying, you know, this is my view on this particular thing, we're good, right? We have a one-way communication that's just distributing information. If we have that same communication occur and then we have then a number of sort of side conversations, that's again when we can run into problems with violating the Brown Act. Right.
Out in a room.
Exactly, yeah. Outside of a meeting, doesn't have to be in the close quarters of, you know, the particular scheduled board meeting. It could be at any time, at any place. I mean, if you happen to find yourself in, you know, a presentation somewhere else with, you know, three of the board members and you all discuss a particular issue that relates to the district, that could also constitute a meeting, right? If you're sending emails back and forth with somebody, that's something that could constitute a meeting. Same thing with a phone call, right? So that brings up some of the just new sort of, yes. Sure.
Talking with another board member about an issue and you think you should let the superintendent know. And so you email the superintendent and then the superintendent forwards that to the board president. How does that work?
So that's obviously a difficult situation. One, it's being done in an effort to, I guess, make sure that there isn't a violation of the Brown Act, is my guess. I mean, not having seen all of the facts, but what you want to do is avoid having a situation where three people are communicating together. So whether it could be a violation or not, sort of depends on the context of the communications that are happening. If you have two people who are communicating with regard to their opinions on a particular issue and those are expressed to another person to provide them with their beliefs about a particular issue, potentially that could arise to a
Right. But if it's just two people, two board members speaking about an issue and they would like that brought to the attention of the superintendent and the superintendent thinks that the board president should know. So the superintendent then passes on that information to the board president.
But isn't the context in which that would happen if the superintendent wanted to make sure it got on the agenda?
I mean, I think there's different contexts, right? It's one thing if the superintendent says, I'd like to go gossip with the board president about this, right? It's another thing if you're trying to plan a meeting and this issues come up and the board president needs to know what the issue is, which is different from talking about people's views, right? I feel like context matters.
Requiring more information, like I said, you know, preparation is an acquisition or exchange of facts.
So I mean, I don't have an answer. It just seems like it it sounds like there are reasons that a superintendent would want to talk to the board president about something.
And right, right. That's what I and and so that's okay. Is that true? I mean, if if I'm talking to another board member about an issue and we're having a conversation, say, Dr. Kelly and I, and we decide, well, the superintendent should perhaps know about this and perhaps this should be on the agenda or it should just be something that he's aware of. And so we tell him or email him and he lets the board president know.
I think again, it comes down to what's communicated, right? If if we're
Well, here's here's the situation. Like I have talked to, I've talked to people about an issue. Okay. Do you want to share with us, Dr. Valoria?
It's we've already addressed this in a legal opinion to the board that I was just referencing.
He remembered what the actual context was.
Well, there have been quite a few different contexts.
Oh, I'm just I'm just referring because he wrote the legal opinion. So I was referring back to that. So I thought that would be fair. So he understood what was being said because the example you're giving is this exact example that he wrote a legal opinion on that we already sent to all the board previously. It was two thousand and twenty-two.
Refreshing, though.
Yeah.
It's a legal opinion.
Yeah.
It's a legal opinion. Put it out in open session.
Oh. So I guess what I'm looking at is if I want to discuss something on one of the board policies and I discuss it only with Clerk Osborne and she wants to bring that forward and lets the superintendent know, superintendent lets the board president know, then is that a violation?
Again, it depends on the context. Right now, it just sounds like an issue is being raised because it's being put forth to be at a meeting. If we're talking about expressing views and we're trying to communicate views to multiple people in order to get some sort of a consensus, that's what's prohibited by the Brown Act, right? That's what we're trying to avoid here. If we're trying to make sure that Brown Act violations aren't occurring, that's not going to be something that's a problem.
Even like clarify, say, in this hypothetical situation, you and I have discussed something that's important to you. And so we've had at length discussions about it and you then contact Superintendent Valoria or President Vickers, say, I want to have this on a future agenda. And I want you to know that I've discussed this with another board member, so I can't discuss it with you. But as board president, following our protocols or to the superintendent, this is an item on a future agenda. Boom. And then you can't have any other conversations and you've disclosed that you've already talked with another board member about it. So you're constantly kind of disclosing where you're at in conversations. So you don't have a majority of people exchanging ideas about something. That would be how I would handle it, especially if they were at length discussions with somebody else.
Yeah, that makes sense. And it also makes sense, too, that if if I'm letting the superintendent know about something, I maybe I I haven't said that I've discussed it with other people, with with one other board member. I mean, I'm just letting him know and asking for that. So he doesn't know and he passes it on to the board president. And I guess I'm looking at not, I I I don't think board members write of who, if they can talk to one other person, I don't think that should be limited to the board president.
My suggestion would be to be very clear if you're telling somebody that you had or if you're bringing up a subject, I would be very clear as to whether you've spoken to somebody else about that subject so that we don't overly share something, first of all, right? Second of all, I think that it's not a good idea to express necessarily your viewpoint or or the viewpoint with another person and then exchange that via email to somebody else that could potentially be passed on, if that makes sense, right? So I mean, i- if you're asking for a particular issue to be placed on a on an agenda item, I think that's obviously something that's acceptable, right? That's not expressing your view on a particular issue that's saying, hey, I would like to discuss this particular issue, right? Yeah. Okay. Oh, sorry. Getting back, okay. So getting back to social media use. So this is obviously something that is so widespread now that it is something we need to make sure that everybody's following the right rules, especially because there has been some more recent legislation to address communications between board members on social media sites. And it can be as simple as, you know, it might be a violation of the Brown Act if somebody, you know, even likes a particular post on a social media site that is run or, you know, a platform run by one of the board members. And we'll get to that. But ultimately, AB nine nine two is is the law that was signed into and enacted on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Became effective on January first, two thousand and twenty-one. So it's been around for a couple of years. However, it's it's starting to, you know, gain a little bit more traction and and be looked at a little bit more. There's a current case in front of the Supreme Court that sort of touches on this particular issue, but also deals with issues of First Amendment rights that members of the public have when commenting on, you know, a public official's particular Facebook page, things like that. But ultimately, what you want to hopefully avoid on these, it's okay to make a post on your social media site, okay? Where we run into problems is if you have another board member who then comments on that particular, you know, post that is making some sort of an opinion about an issue that's related to the district. So now we have two, you know, board members who are commenting on a particular issue and then we have anybody else who could see that particular comment and that, you know, position on a particular issue, right? So now you have definitely a possible Brown Act violation because you have a majority of people who potentially are aware of what the views are of at least two people, right? And so we want to avoid doing that type of conduct. It's okay to answer questions of the public. Oftentimes, you know, the public will send in a question and say, hey, here's my question related to this item, as long as it's something that you're authorized to comment on by the district and provide an answer to that type of question. Provide information to the public if they're just simply asking you, you know, about an event that's happening or something like that. It's obviously okay to do that. And it's also okay to solicit public input on matters within the body's jurisdiction. So say, you know, you have a particular issue that you care about and you want to sort of poll the public. You can put that question out there for the public, but board members should refrain from commenting on that particular thing, obviously. Sure.
My Facebook page. How many other members of the public agree or disagree? I I I'm free to put that out there.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Can I just ask?
Sure.
It gets really complicated because I'm just thinking a number of years back when we were having an issue and we were getting communications from across the country. So you put something like that, like what Member Perry's saying, you ask for an opinion. That could be from somebody in Kansas that answers your post. It doesn't really give you, to me, any valid information necessarily about your local community. Would that be fair to make that statement?
Very true.
And the other thing is that to me, I think we need to keep in mind, be very careful to know that whatever we put, not only on a Facebook post, but in an email answer to someone can be cut and pasted, can be turned into something that we didn't say at all. And it's just, you know, I think we have to have a lot of caution.
Yeah, also true. I mean, you have to, you know, say you're putting a question on Facebook and you get a bunch of random answers from people. You have to sort of take that with a grain of salt as to what it is, right? I mean, a lot of people are anonymous online. You don't know who it is that's responding. So is that maybe the best way to get information? I mean, I don't know that it's something you want to rely on, but it's certainly something that you could use to maybe at least get an idea as to what's happening. But as far as relying on it, saying this is what our community thinks, I don't know if that's the I don't know if that's the right thing to do.
Facebook page for the school board isn't just going to show up on everybody's feed. It's going to show up on the feed of the people who are friends of mine because it's connected.
Possibly, but I mean, you're not, you don't have a private page, do you?
No, but I Some of the younger people who are wizards.
But the way the algorithms work is that the Facebook, you know, the the social media tends to show up in the people's feeds who have looked at your social media page. So it's a very narrowly defined
It's possible, but
People could look it up.
Nobody knows how the algorithms work.
Yeah.
Because random things show up on people's pages all the time.
True. That's true.
Yeah. And I think to President Vickers' point, if you have a private page, so if you have a private Facebook or a private Instagram page where you are proving each person that is coming onto your page, then you could say, oh, that's Bob Smith. Let me look at Bob Smith's page. Oh, I know Bob Smith's friends. That's actually Bob. Now he's going to be part of my conversation or part of my social, online social life. But if you haven't really locked down your social media, which is, you know, more typical, then yes, you don't really know who's necessarily following you. Somebody in Kansas might have seen that Joan's neighbor is friends with her and she kind of likes the things that Joan puts. So now the Kansas neighbor is also following you, so.
Can I ask an extension question on that? Putting a like on something as far as board members, if
Putting a like on something as far as board members, if a parent in the community puts something up uh regarding an issue that we're going to deal with, that may be a controversial issue. Uh, would it be a violation if three board members all like that?
I mean, I would say that's not something that we should do. I mean, if it's of a controversial situation or it's or if it's a an issue that is within the district's jurisdiction and it's an issue that can come up that you're all going to be discussing potentially at a at a board meeting. If, you know, three people like something that that person says that sort of signifies, oh, okay, these three people have the same viewpoint that I have on this particular issue. Right? It's it's one of those things where it's like practically speaking, would it result in the Brown Act violation? I'm not sure, right? But it could give the appearance that there was one. And if and if somebody dug into it and, you know, a decision is made, you know, perhaps a a couple of weeks later, um, it may be something that the public would say, hey, they've already sort of discussed this issue through the social media post. Right? And now we want to overturn that decision. And we'll get to some of the ramifications of violating the Brown, but yeah. Okay. So this is just kind of going through some of the things we've already talked about. Obviously, directly responding to a social media communication made, posted or shared by any of the members of the same legislative body regarding a matter within the legislative body's subject manager's distinction is something that you want to refrain from uh so that it doesn't give the appearance at a minimum of a Brown Act violation. Um, so we have another, you know, handy dandy little uh diagram here. So we have a Facebook post by one person, another board member, then comments on that Facebook post, and then we have a third board member who likes the comment, right? That's the clearest sort of picture of a potential violation right there because now we have for sure three different board members who have weighed in on a particular issue. Uh, this is that case that I mentioned, O'Connor Ratcliffe versus Garnier. Um, this case is in the Supreme Court currently. Uh, it's related to a first amendment, a claimed First Amendment violation by a member of the public who is blocked from the social media account of a uh elected official essentially. And so the question is, if you're an elected official and you have a public um page for social media, does that create a public forum or a limited public forum for purposes of uh free speech and the First Amendment? And so that was argued recently, I believe in October. Uh, there has been no decision yet. But, you know, the way that the courts have been going on on First Amendment cases, I suspect that they may come down on, you know, it does violate this person's First Amendment right to be blocked unless they're obviously doing something that is improper and, you know, would violate or or would not qualify for for free speech, right? I mean, there are certain things where if you're making threats or, you know, if you are doing something that's disruptive, you know, to the particular environment, and obviously that's a little bit of a gray area. But if you're doing those types of things, you know, there are ways where it doesn't qualify as First Amendment uh protected. But courts are more likely to side on the free speech rights than they are on um you know, being able to silence somebody essentially. Yes.
Well, did not have a work-related social media account and a personal social media account. So this elected official was using their personal for for both areas.
Yes.
About their kid's soccer and talking about issues before this elected.
Right, right. And they had, I mean, they were putting themselves out there as an official on on that. You know, even though it was a personal page, they were, you know, making comments as a public official on that page.
So that would be kind of not a great practice.
Not a great practice.
Right.
Definitely.
Classic like don't make personal on your professional lives. Okay.
Definitely want to separate those things. It's the same same idea as, you know, if you're, you you want to obviously avoid using any kind of personal email account, right, for your board member duties. You want to be using the district, the district email. That way we don't have that sort of confluence of of private and public.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Uh, this is just some more in information on that particular case. Uh, one important, one one key takeaway is, you know, if the Ninth Circuit decision is upheld, um, that probably makes qualified immunity unavailable for uh the elected official. And for those of you who don't know what qualified immunity is, is it's an immunity that public official or state officials have for actions that they take that aren't clearly defined by law. Um, so it's applied a lot in the context of like law enforcement or, you know, in in school districts when you have some sort of a alleged violation of federal rights. Um, and there's nothing that clearly says this was a violation of rights. Then you can be immune from liability and you can, we can essentially get the case dismissed. But if you have a case that's, you know, on point or or close to on point, that's when qualified immunity wouldn't apply. All right. Any more questions sort of on the what is a meeting? As far as uh sort of outside the concept confines of the room? Okay. So virtual meetings, are Zoom meetings still allowed? Um, they are still allowed under certain circumstances. Um, obviously, there's still sort of the traditional rules um that can apply to individuals attending remotely. Those ones are far more limited um and requires that uh if you're going to be remote, it has to be less than a, it has to be less than a quorum. Um, and basically you have to identify the location where you are. You have to make it available for the public to come to that place. Um, and uh they have to be able to put all of that on to the agenda. That's sort of the traditional method, yes. Meaning less like two people, less than the majority, a a quorum cannot attend remotely under the traditional rule. They could, yes. But again, you have to, you have to open it. Essentially, if you're doing it from home, you have to open it up to the public to to come and watch you do it from home. Okay. Um, but there has been new law uh that became effective January first, twenty twenty three, A B two four four nine, um, which gives some additional uh opportunity to to do a meeting remotely. If you need to, you have to prove that there was good cause for it or some sort of an emergency. Um, essentially, again, there has to be a quorum of board members in person at the location that's normally slated for the board meeting. Um, but the folks who are attending remotely, they have to be doing so um by way of a some sort of a platform that allows two-way communication. So Zoom, for example, or some sort of a a phone service that allows two-way communication. You also have to make sure that if you're, let's see. If you're doing so by emergency, you cannot do it more than three times and three consecutive months in a row. Um, if you're doing it as a result of other good cause, you can't do it more than twice in one year. So there are limitations because they don't want board members just doing everything remotely still. Let's see. As far as some examples for emergency, I mean, obviously there um is some gray area, but emergency circumstances generally tends to be like if you have a family emergency, you know, somebody is injured, you have to go to, you know, hospital or do something like that. Um, for good cause, for example, if you have childcare issues, um that can, that can um be good cause. Uh, but something, something that has some significance to where you just cannot make it. Um, if you're traveling on business for the district, that could also constitute good cause to do the remote. And then obviously, the the last one is A B three sixty one, which was in effect, you know, previously over the course of the pandemic. Um, that still remains as far as if there's a state of emergency and it's declared, you know, that things can be remote, then things can be remote again. All right, properly noticed is the next portion. Um, I think most of you know the the notice rules, but we'll go through them again just to make sure. Um, basically, the the general rule is you got to post within seventy two hours prior to the start of the meeting. Uh, that's when the agenda has to be made available to the public. Uh, for a special meeting, it just has to be posted at least twenty four hours prior to the start. Recently enacted website posting requirements, um, you just have to make sure that whatever's posted online has to be uh downloadable and searchable by the public. And then um the agenda has to obviously contain general descriptions for all of the matters that are going to be discussed and all of the sort of backup documents need to be made available to the public as long as they're not subject to some sort of privilege. Um, sometimes, you know, for example, a an attorney-client privileged communication that's being sent to the board that can be withheld, obviously. Um, but, you know, there's more limited reasons to not provide the documents to the public. As far as amending agendas, uh, I I know you all don't make a habit of doing that. Um, but it it can happen under specific circumstances, mainly being that if you're pulling an item from the agenda. Uh, otherwise, uh, it's it's not a good idea to add something to the agenda, you know, in less than the seventy two hours. Uh, generally speaking, you just want to make sure as that the agenda apprises the public of what's going to be discussed. Um, so you don't have to provide too much information, but you got to provide enough information so they know what's going on. Closed session. This is obviously um a really important topic. Um, there are listed reasons why a board can have closed session meetings. Um, they are construed strictly, meaning that uh courts will look at them narrowly. Uh, they will not. You know, if there's a question as to whether something fits within a particular exception, the court is going to fall on the side of it should have been open session rather than a closed session. Um, the the primary ones, and we didn't name them all here, is, you know, discussing existing or anticipated litigation. That one obviously gets used a lot. Um, there are some very specific requirements, um, because there's a few different categories for, you know, those types of agenda items. For example, you know, if it's uh a lawsuit that's already in existence and has already been filed, you have to make sure you put the lawsuit information on there, you know, the case number, those types of things, so that the public can check it out and know what the lawsuit's about. Um, discussing public safety threats, obviously, that's an important aspect that can go within the the closed session. Uh, student matters, you know, unless there's a a a public uh a ma- a request made for a public presentation, you know, which can be made by a student, for example, who's being expelled. They're they have the right to do that. But in general, those should be in closed session. Individual performer personnel matters. Um, again, those are, those are things that the the board can talk about in closed session. Consulting with real property negotiators, um, this one is obviously very important, you know, and and with regard to records that relate to those negotiations, too, those tend to be privileged until, you know, the deal is made. Um, which helps the 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 district make those types of deals because if everything was disclosable prior to that, it could sort of um impair the the district's ability to negotiate. And then, you know, consulting with labor negotiators, um, that's obviously another important one where we want to make sure that anything that's discussed in closed session related to any type of negotiation remains confidential because it benefits the district and that way they can maintain their position and, you know, carry it forward. I mean, anything.
Concession, but also could be enclosed. I mean, where it's a it's it's a judgment call.
I mean, really, the the district, if there's something that has an exception to the open session requirement, the district could make the decision to have it in open session if they really wanted to. There are certain ones that cannot be.
Mm hmm.
Um, but in general, you know, I think it's a best practice if it's subject to a closed session exception, it's best to do it in closed session. There's a reason why the legislature created these specific exceptions, right? Um, and most of them are to make sure that the district board can discuss these items openly among themselves and make sure that they come to the right decision before something is reported out to the public. Um, oh, uh, even if it's closed session, the item still needs to be agendized, right? So it still needs to have some information as to what's going to be disclosed uh or what's going to be discussed. That way the public has the opportunity, if they want to, to raise some concerns, you know, in their portion of the public session. Uh, whenever it is that the district authorizes that. Okay. Public participation. Um, this is the whole reason for the Brown Act, right? So we want to make sure that the public is given the opportunity to address items on an agenda before, during, or before or during the board's consideration of the item. And again, that's sort of up to when the district sets that that time for the public to speak. Um, for regular meetings, they must allow public comment on non-agenda items as well. Um, oftentimes, this is where, you know, an issue may be raised that then is put on a later agenda, right, for the district to to discuss. Um, public comment on the agenda and non-agenda items, uh, the district is allowed to adopt regulations that are reasonable as to time um and and as to when things are going to occur. And that's how it allows, that's how you guys are able to run your meeting. I mean, if if there were no limitations on those things, you know, they could go on forever, kind of like a community college district meeting does most of the time. I don't know if you've ever attended one. But um, you know, so that's why we have these, you know, times for speakers. Um, and there's ways to do it either by speaker, by topic. Um, or you can set a separate time for non-agenda items. It's all a good idea to make sure that there is some limitation uh and puts a little bit of constraint so you guys can move on with your business. Uh, public participation, we're continuing on with that. As far as uh video audio recording and photography and photography is generally something that the public is entitled to do unless it disrupts the meeting, right? Uh, and that disruption requirement is, you know, it's pretty high. I mean, you have to hit a high burden in order to say this thing is disruptive to the meeting. But it can happen. And if it does happen, you know, the district or the board should take appropriate action uh to to stop it. Uh, agenda backup materials, I think we already kind of talked about that. But again, any of the backup materials for agenda items are public records and they should be made available to the public. Um, I think you all posted online. So it's it's easily accessible that way. Um, the and those materials should be made available at the time that the agenda is posted. Oh, this is uh the point at the bottom there. Beware the danger of the perception of silent participation. Um, this is one, another one of those times where, you know, maybe you're not giving, or maybe you're not actually violating violating the Brown Act, but it may give the appearance that there's a violation, right? If you have multiple board members who are texting, um, that could be construed as, oh, I wonder if they're texting to each other, you know, then you might get a Public Records Act request that says I want all text messages sent, you know, between all the board members on this day, between these times, those types of things. Um, same thing with conversations on breaks. Obviously, it's okay to have conversations on breaks, just trying to make sure that you're refraining from talking about any kind of issues that um were brought up during the meeting or, you know, potentially within the jurisdiction of the district. All right, make sure that if there is an item that is brought up during a board meeting, um, that is not on the agenda, the board should spend, you know, as little time as possible talking about that particular item. We don't want to be talking about or trying to make a decision on things that are not agendized. Um, again, the rule, no action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that members of a legislative body or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimonial rights. Um, on their own initiative or in response to questions posed by the public, ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement, or make a brief report on his or own activities. Uh, or provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information, request staff to report back to the body at a subsequent meeting concerning any matter or take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. So just very limited, you know, if somebody brings up a topic and asks the board to weigh in on it, um, really, the best course of action is to say, you know, we're sorry, this isn't agendized, you know, this may be something we can take up at a future board meeting. Um, we appreciate you, you know, bringing this to our attention, you know, that type of thing. Um, but but try to avoid too much conversation on it. Obviously, if there's a follow-up clarifying question that you need in order to sort of, you know, craft your request to put something on a a future agenda item, by all means, ask the clarifying question to try and get some more information. Um, but just be careful not to uh go too far. All right, possible consequences for violating the Brown. So there's, there's a number of things um that range anywhere from, you know, potential criminal liability to civil liability. Um, obviously, you want to avoid violating the Brown Act at all costs. And and really, I mean, just the fact that you could be subject to litigation is enough to hopefully make you want to avoid these types of violations. Litigation, you know, on these types of Brown Act claims can result in, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in attorney's fees for the other side if they're successful. And they're entitled to attorney's fees if they are successful in a Brown Act like case. And that that goes for, you know, if there was a, if there was a meeting that took place that wasn't supposed to take place, if there was an improper action taken by the board. And there's a whole different, there's a whole number of statutes that relate to these types of actions that can be taken. Keep in mind, one, you know, one example of a Brown Act violation that could result in some sort of a criminal penalty is disclosing confidential discussions that took place during closed session. That's something that can be prosecuted by, you know, the local authorities. It's obviously up to their discretion. But doing so can, you know, obviously result, I think, in a in a misdemeanor. The other thing that we run into is if if there are, you know, potential violations of the Brown Act, the district attorney can also order that, you know, the the district board record all of their sessions and then, you know, that can be made available to the district attorney if they make the appropriate showing to the judge that they can monitor things. You know, there's requests to cure and correct. Essentially, if there's a violation of or a believed violation of of the Brown Act, somebody can request that the the board cure and correct. It gives them the opportunity to fix whatever it is that they're claiming was wrong. And if they don't, then that's when they would go forward and file some sort of a civil action for either injunction, injunctive relief, or or something else. So definitely want to avoid that. Violations of the meeting notice and agenda provisions can also result in that particular. Any action taken on those agenda items can be deemed null and void. So obviously, you want to avoid that. That's why we want to make sure that we have all the proper notice going into the agenda and that conversations aren't happening off the books, because those are the types of things that can nullify a a decision. So we have about a little over five minutes left. I don't know if anybody has any other questions? No? All right.
Convening and the first item is number five, public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any for that?
Yes, come on. Board, if you could just pass your card over to Superintendent Floria. And just give us a minute, we'll get the timer up here for you.
As adults with a huge smile, tell her they recognized her, say how much they appreciated having her as a teacher, and thank her for the positive impact she had had on their life. She would stop to chat and catch up as she enjoyed hearing about what each one had been doing and where they were going in life. It really made her happy to have helped educate so many children over the years and to have had such a positive impact on their lives. As her son, I saw this firsthand, of course, and it gave me a deep appreciation for not only the tireless work teachers do as they navigate the many challenges faced by the educational system, but the enormous positive impact they can have on the lives of kids. I say this tonight not only to provide insight, but also to be clear that I and many others involved in Sensible Laguna and the broader community fully support the kids, teachers, and the many positive things you are working to accomplish at the schools. We can probably all agree that at this point as well, that while the facilities planning journey has at times been bumpy, that can occur with many extended processes. Perhaps with hindsight, we might even agree that things might have even been done differently at different points along the way, but we sadly do not get to use hindsight. The good news is that also at this point, when viewed through the lens of the school district, we all want the kids to have a new state-of-the-art pool at the high school that meets the needs of the coaches and student athletes. Perhaps we can also all agree that when viewed through the lens of the city, we all want a decision as soon as their thorough analysis has concluded. I'm sure that we all hope that if, for whatever reason, the city decides not to join the school district in the proposed pool, at least they will move ahead with a second pool to help take strain off the system and allow for even more aquatic options here in Laguna Beach. We can all agree both the city and the school district need increased aquatic capacity. The kids need a pool capable of hosting home games and effective practices. The city needs water for lap swim, recreation, and club teams and exercise programs. It also must ensure the endearing baby pool fits in here somewhere to keep those parents happy too. In a small community like Laguna Beach, having a public disconnect between elected entities that dictate the majority spending of resident tax dollars is challenging. This is even more challenging when you consider swimming pools cost millions of dollars to build and to maintain. It is critical from a taxpayer perspective for all parties to continue to analyze the options with an open mind. There remain multiple viable options. Perfect. And each one comes with its own costs, capabilities, and other factors, but they require cooperation and compromise by everyone with a vested interest to get the best possible answer for all. Eighteen seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another card?
I do, and I just wanted to, I think, are there two people making public comment or just one more? I just have one more card. Do you like to make a public comment? Did you want to make a public comment? Nope, okay, no problem. So the way this timer works is it goes for three minutes, just give everybody a heads up because I wanted to watch it. And then at thirty seconds, Ms. Weber, it gives you a ding that we have a little warning that your time is nearing. Because when we get to the zero mark, you do need to be complete. So we're trying to find ways to make it seem nicer and and more polite, but still abide by the three-minute warning. So thank you for finding the new timer. And I call our next speaker up to the microphone. This is Kevin Hua. Okay, welcome, Kevin.
Hi, so I'm a student at Laguna Beach High School. I am the leader of the Business Club, the Econ Club, and I've been very interested in business for the entirety of my high school career. And I've been, I've been really just trying to increase business awareness and people that are interested. There's a lot of students at Laguna Beach High School that are very interested in business and they want to do that for their college. So for my, with my club, we ask for interviews with business people around Laguna Beach so we can get some more experience. And that means that there's a lot of interest at this school for a very specialized major in college. But our school doesn't have any any business teachers, it doesn't have any resources for all of our students that are interested in it. And I talked to Mr. Dale Miller at the school. He's an administrator and he said that he was very really willing for a business professor if we could find one. So we have some classes like IVC, our local community college at Irvine, and they offer some business classes like intro- introduction to business. However, I have heard many of these students are unsatisfied with the fact that business is a very hands-on type of subject when you're creating your business plan and such. So we really want a class that's more hands-on, something that's at the high school. I think that would be very helpful. My club is one of the biggest in the in the school. We have bi-weekly meetings, up to thirty to sixty people. So a lot of people are interested in this subject, but we don't have the resources to act on that. So I was just wanting to make my public comment on perhaps adding more resources towards a a interest at Laguna Beach High School. Thank you.
Ken, thank you. Thank you. I just want to make sure, so are you asking for a business class at the high school?
I'm asking yes. If we could have a business class, that'd be amazing.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Kevin. Are there any other public speakers? Okay, see none present speakers? Thank you, we move to section six, reports. First up is our student board members' report.
Good evening, board. I'll start this evening's report off. I had the opportunity this week to visit every single school site and visit and talk and discuss with every single student leadership on campus. So I'll start with what I, who I visited today, top of the world. So I visited with students, grades one through five on the leadership teams in each respective grade level. And just to start off, the, you know, their ability to articulate themselves is incredible at such a young age. When I went to Sacramento a couple of months ago, I visited a school in Sacramento and you can visibly tell a difference between the students here and there, and the resources they have offered here were incredible. I was really, really impressed. Some things that I talked to them about that they were working on today is they're brainstorming their jog-a-thon, which I was at TOW and that was one of the, you know, the key components of going, you know, having a good time there. I remember always doing that. And one thing that I thought was really interesting that they're bringing up is, you know, not everyone is able to run for a sixty minutes straight. Not everyone's able to jog. We have, some individuals have physical mobility issues. That's that's a real, that's a real reality for a lot of individuals. And so they were discussing how best to include everyone at the jog-a-thon, which I think is really, really important. So they were discussing different DEI initiatives they could take to make sure that everyone can participate in the jog-a-thon, even if not everyone's able to run, you know, for the full sixty minutes, you know, walking or other aspects they could do. So that was one of the things that I talked with TOW, as well as just hearing some really valuable feedback for myself and also Ms. Schooler as well, just being able to, as I have a student there, I think, really assisted with them being able to share their beliefs. And then at Almore, I went to Almore yesterday and I had the opportunity to meet with students from grades one through five. And one of the overwhelming things I heard was a lot of positive feedback about the school power grant they received that provided some new PE equipment, which is awesome. I was really glad to hear that that was a really, you know, key component of their day that really excited them to come to school. Was one of the things I asked them was like, why do you care? What excites you to come to school? Why, why do you wake up in the morning saying, you know, I'm ready to go to school? And that was one of them, so I was really glad to hear about that. And then they're also working on, and we kind of brainstormed this when I was there with them too, is sustainable practices on their campus. And so again, we go to those key, you know, key pillars of being able to recycle their trash. And also, we, you know, discuss their ability to, you know, influence school culture. And I think that was something that they really, you know, had almost a little bit of an epiphany yesterday. They play a really big role in their campus and, you know, that was an awesome thing to hear that they're, you know, working towards that. And then at Thurston, I met with the ASB president, Lisette, which was really, it was really nice to hear from her. We talked about, obviously, you know, we talked about some of the difficulties that Thurston's facing, you know, and, you know, with vaping and marijuana. I heard some really valuable insight about that and what they're taking to combat. So I think it's a really important thing that we at least, you know, think, keep in the back of our minds. And then today, Laguna Beach High School came down, Laguna Beach High School's Associate Student Body came down to Thurston and did kind of like a spirit kind of activity where they showed what culture, what school culture looks like at LBHS, which I think is really cool, but I heard there were some, you know, some of the sixth graders and the eighth graders, they were just a really like, there was really disconnected. Just, I mean, obviously, the grade levels and, you know, stuff like that. But I was really glad to hear that they were able to come down and show like, you know, I, you know, LBHS, you know, whether they're an underclassman or an upperclassman, you, you, we all worked together, we're all on the teams together. And so I was really glad to hear that, you know, the ASB came down. And then with the high school, I'm, last week, I met with all the ASB members of the high school. And I, you know, heard from grade level by grade level, but it was really awesome to hear about, you know, what's going on at school. The overwhelmingly, what I heard from every single school site was the relationships with the teachers were just incredible. That's really who supported them throughout the day was those relationships with the teachers. Really want to emphasize that. And then also hearing about the Unity Week, LBHS puts on, is putting on their first Unity Week, which its goal was to show that, you know, not every, you, we can, we, 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 there's more of us that are the same than different. And I think that's really important for us to think about, that our differences necessarily don't define us. And so kind of what we, what they did this week was they had, you know, each day there was a different focuses. So one day it was dyslexia and everyone read what, you know, read, read a page of what it was like, you know, different types. Obviously, dyslexia is different for everyone, but they kind of saw what it was like for a dyslexic person to read. And how, I mean, I could not, I could not read, it was incredibly difficult. So it kind of, you know, allowed us to have empathy for others. And so overwhelmingly, I just heard from all the school sites, so again, those relationships were really important. And overall, they felt really excited to come to school. And then on a personal level, I had my, the City Laguna Beach Recreation Meeting on Monday this week and just heard some really interesting things about what they're doing with regards to, you know, aquatics and pool and their plant, what the recommendation is to the council for the March twelfth meeting. So just heard some really interesting insight from the rec commuting as well. And that's all for this evening.
Thank you, was that the city rec?
Yes.
You're representative on that now. Thank you. Okay, next we have our bargaining unit representatives, we have CSE with us tonight.
Just me. We just wanted to say we appreciated the recent IBB negotiations refresher that we had joint with the Teachers Union and the district. Is a good reminder of the benefits and the collaboration of IBB. So we really appreciated that and we look forward to starting negotiations next month. So that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have not a school resource officer this evening, correct? Is he here or not? Oh, he is here, okay. Take your report next, please.
Good evening, first and foremost, I'd like to apologize for my very casual appearance. Daniel Lopez, your new school resource officer. I've been attending a week-long SRO school as mandated by California State Law for new officers stepping into the role. So I've been there for the last four days and I'm going back tomorrow morning as well, all the way in Corona. So again, I apologize for the appearance. I'd like to enlighten you in some of that course. We involve previous case studies about events happening across America, including past events, including acts of violence and so on and so forth. Also involving a number of scenarios where we play both student, officer, and/or administrator to kind of get it from every angle. I think it's very important for every officer who are stepping into the SRO position to understand those. But enough about that, let's move on to the other things as well. As you have no doubt know from our last meeting, we went to John Wayne Airport with a few students from Luton Beach High School. I know that's kind of old news, but what you may not know is that we put up a video on our, our Instagram through the SRO program and that video has received over five thousand views and several shares. We've been contacted by several other agency SRO programs, asking how we did it, why we did it, and how they could do it too. Now, not to share light on ourselves, but this goes back to the student body at the end of the day. At the end of the day, every student there was fascinated by some sort of aspect of that trip. That's a proud moment for myself and for my partner, Ashley, knowing that they have an interest, whether it be in law enforcement and aviation and so on and so forth. So that is a fantastic thing and I hope you share that proud moment with me as well. Moving on, we've also had several other donuts and ice cream ride-alongs before or after school, now in that order. But that being said, we're taking a little dial back from that, recognizing that we had so many on the docket and we were doing so many on a daily basis, we decided that we need to prioritize our time at the sites. At the end of the day, our priority is always going to be at the sites. Don't worry, that's not going away. If you want to ride along, you can, not just me, we could talk about it on the side. But that being said, we have several planned up in the coming months, but a little bit more spread out so we can prioritize our time and show the love to every site. As a new SRO, I'm still learning faces and names, names and faces. So if I forget anyone of your names, I do apologize. There's a reason we all have name tags on our uniforms, but I will recognize you, I promise you that. That being said, my goal for myself for the rest of this year is to meet every staff member and every student. Considering that we're well underway with the school year, that's the heck of an undertaking, but I'm up for the game. That being said, by making my my face known, making my name known to the students and to the staff, I'm hoping that'll open, open those doors for the future and have both staff and students comfortable talking to me about anything that may come up. In other news, we've also attended the winter formal dance as well as Thurston's Winter Fest. Winter Fest. Keep on saying Winter Wonderland, but I know that's not right. I apologize. Had a great opportunity to meet some parents there as well, and that's not an opportunity I get very often. So I took full advantage of that, introduced myself, shook some hands, so on and so forth, interact with the staff and the students as well. I was very happy to see that all kinds of cool things that I didn't get when I was in school. I'm a little jealous, so pardon my jealousy. But nevertheless, we were present there and we had a great time with the students, staff, and parents as well. My partner Ashley and I also presented a cyber safety presentation at the Parent Project over at the Filmy Resource Center near the high school. And it was so well-received that we've been asked to do another. Now, again, I'm not blowing our steam or tooting our horns, but at the end of the day, the priority falls back to the students. And I'm really happy to say with the parents' interest, concern, and wealth and thirst for information, we're happy to give them those resources and so on and so forth. So we're very happy to see that it was well-received and we're looking forward to the next one. Yet to be scheduled at this time. And last but not least, we are gearing up for our e-bike safety course here at Thurston. It's going to be one heck of a venture, that's for sure. It's my first one, so I'm naturally white-knuckled at the podium as I talk about it. But nevertheless, we're looking forward to it. Considering every kid in Laguna Beach got an e-bike for Christmas, I did not. But nevertheless, looking forward to helping teach them the rules of the road, some safety tips, some tricks, and making sure that they wear their helmet and make sure they But nevertheless, looking forward to helping teach them the rules of the road, some safety tips, some tricks and making sure that they wear their helmet and make sure they buckle it. That's all I have for you for now. Do you have any questions I can answer for you at this time?
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want, I wanted to know what the enrollment was for the e-bike course. Do you have a approximate?
Uh, at this time, I do not unfortunately, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I do know that number grows with every passing moment, considering that e-bikes are purchased pretty much every five seconds of the day. Uh, but from my knowledge, we have a vast number. Unfortunately, I don't have an exact figure at this time.
Okay, just maybe let Dr. Valoria know, that way we know how many new e-bikers we have up and down our roads. Uh, and you have two courses this?
Yes.
You have two consecutive, like a week?
Correct.
And then another week? Okay, so maybe the total enrolled. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you again and very thorough. You're very busy and I appreciate that you're emphasizing buckling the helmet. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dr. Valoria.
Good evening. Um, I just want to, I'll keep it brief because we have a couple of presentations tonight. So, um, a couple of things I attended more recently, the UCI, uh, Countering Hate Summit. Um, it was myself and several, um, staff members from each of our school sites were in attendance. Um, it was a panel, uh, summit, a very informative, uh, speakers. And I think, uh, the team that was there took a lot of ideas away of, uh, opportunities for us to continue to work, um, on for like our No Place For Hate work at all of our school sites. I did attend the School Power Show Challenge. I think that's, uh, within the last time we had meetings, but we've had a lot of meetings lately, so. Um, and again, appreciate School Power and all their work there. And then more, more recently, um, just going live today, we put out the twenty, two thousand twenty-three annual report to the community. Um, special thanks to Anna Karen, uh, for all of her work and Andy for the video, which, um, I was thinking about showing, but I think we'll, uh, we'll send it home in the weekly update so you can access it at home. It's a, it's six minutes, so that would take up my three minutes. Um, uh, it's all posted on our website. I think you'll really be pleased with the direction we went with the community report this year. Um, we're trying to make it really readable and usable for the broader community, not just our, uh, school community. So, uh, look forward to that on your doorsteps on Friday, but the digital version went out today. So, thank you.
Does that come with the independent or it comes separately?
Comes with the independent.
Okay, thank you. Now we have our cabinet members, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Vickers. I'll also be brief. Uh, last week we did hold our Joint Fiscal Management Committee meeting. Uh, not a lot to unpack as far as the governor's January proposal, but we were able to talk through some of the differences of how it may impact us versus a traditional local control funding formula district. So I always appreciate sharing that information with the committee and all the feedback we get. Um, I'm also happy to report our survey for the optional active violence emergency response training program that we're holding on March ninth that went out to all of our staff. Survey has closed and we have forty-four participants, so a very large chunk of our, our staff. And I appreciate everyone who helped get the message out. We're very excited for this. We know it's a very good training. Ms. Weber and myself have been through it. It's about a five-hour training and it goes through a lot of different, um, scenarios as well as situational awareness. And, um, very excited and we will be sure to get, survey our staff after to get feedback, to see if it's something we can continue. But I'm just really excited that we have such a strong turnout for this first opportunity, especially on a Saturday. So.
That's, uh, classified and certificated?
Available to all staff, correct. And they're representative from all sites.
And, thank you.
Yes.
You anticipated that. Thank you, Mr. Conlon.
Thank you, President Vickers. Um, so our recruitment efforts are underway for Summer School twenty twenty-four with the LBHS Summer Academy and the Summer Bridge and Jump Start Program, K eight Summer Academy and extended school year, as well as the K eight Lead Summer Version Program. So special thanks to, uh, to Betsy Canenberg, who's leading the charge for all of our summer programming. It's a, a very robust, uh, program that we have going on. And as, um, looking down at Nikki, as Nikki had shared, we did have our IBB refresher training last week. So that was members of the CSCA, Labufa and Management Negotiations Teams came together, um, with the, the trainer that you, you approved up, up back in January. And, uh, again, it was, it was a great focus on the importance of having collaborative relationships, which is a foundational tenet to the IBB process. And then our, the HR team is enjoying visiting the sites around this time of year and we're sharing our gratitude for the staff's work and bringing some sweet treats as a small token of appreciation. So nothing says thank you like a mini bundt cake. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I'm going to save my report. We have a, we have a longer, uh, mid-year update report from instructional services coming up, coming up later in the meeting. So I'll pass for now.
Thank you. And we have a principal's report from Megan Schooler, top of the world. Thank you.
Good evening. Do I need to get it? Thank you. I feel like Carter did such a good job. I could probably just skip to the questions and sit down. Um, I wanted to first off, thank the board for having me here. It's always such a pleasure to get to be in front of you guys and speaking about the work of the staff that I get to work alongside. I feel like if this was a more honest presentation, I could have eighty people standing with me, plus about five hundred and fifty kids and their whole families, because everything we do is truly about the whole team and the whole, the family. Today, tonight, I'm going to try to cover the three goals we're working on. Got my timer running. You guys don't have one for me, but I'm going to try to do this in about fifteen minutes and give you some time for questions as well. We're going to talk about what we're doing with college and career readiness, integrating VAPA, Science Library, all of the different, all of the different, like, professional learning and the opportunities for expanding, uh, through encore with our upper grades. I want to talk a little bit about our social emotional goal and what we're doing with PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, as well as social emotional learning. Talk about how we're trying to grow student voice and choice and then hit quickly on safe, equitable and inclusive schools, specifically absenteeism, the way we're using our MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support, as well as our restorative practices. So, starting off with, um, college and career readiness skills. We are so lucky to have the support of the board and having our VAPA TOSA five days a week now at our site, along with our science lab, our garden, our library, which has two dynamic people working in there. We have a tech TOSA PE staff, our students have, and Carter kind of hit on it. Our kids talk about when we ask them today, what do you love about school? Every kid has a different answer. I love PE, I love science, I love the labs, I love the library. And to me at elementary, that really is one of the foundational things that we're able to accomplish that gets a child ready for college and career. It's exposure, it's getting to experience authentic learning in a variety of spaces. So that's definitely been a focus this year. And then thanks to the work at the district level with our instructional services, our teachers are engaging in professional learning around the idea of how we can really develop authentic learning experiences through real-world lesson design. So we have a lot of staff, including our library teacher who's over here, Nikki, who has gone through the process of unpacking how we can make more authentic learning experiences for students. Um, we are also looking at our multi-tiered system of support. And one of the things we identified was wanting to find some new opportunities for our fourth and fifth grade students to experience, if in that what I need time, new, new things. So we now have, uh, every student's cycle through at least once, getting to spend a little extra time in art, doing tesillations connected to geometric math skills. Um, working in the arts class or the music classes, history of music. So we're trying to find new ways to expand there as well. And what that looks like, uh, is stuff, stuff like this picture on the left, where our fifth graders helped our TK students code a little Ozbotz, or I'm always going to say it wrong, and get them to actually make a balloon parade. Or our third graders going to the environment, Environmental Nature Center to learn about the indigenous histories of our own local community. So again, this is a lot of what it looks like to do college and career in the elementary school. Another goal that we have is the social emotional competencies and positive self-identity. And this really, I would sum it up as saying, we want to know all of our students and we want to know what support they need. And we want to find ways to increase voice on campus. This picture here is some of our pals decorating for one of our kindness campaign activities with chalk, uh, spreading words of kindness on campus before school. So what does that look like at top of the world this year? Uh, we have two teacher leads, one leading our MTSS SEL, our social emotional team. And we have a teacher lead who's leading our behavior team. They are working collaboratively to align our efforts around both the instruction at the tier one, as well as behavioral consistency and responses across all tiers. So we've refined our expectations for behavior and how we're following up. We have monthly and daily recognition for students, including raffles, raffles every morning over the PA, monthly assemblies to celebrate students. We have themed announcements that we send home with parent messaging at least once, usually more than once a month, and then reminders throughout at the weekly, uh, weekly messaging. And we also have started SEL grade level assemblies. So it's the TK and Kinder Come Together, our counselor, SSS and myself meet with the group and we talk through an SEL theme for the month. So this month is all about self-esteem at TOW, the idea of self-love. Last month was kindness month in connection with the kindness campaign. For student engagement, we are continuing to run our student council. It's a long-running club at TOW. We also have our pals, which has taken on a slightly new, uh, shape this year with our counselor, Bria Naya. We have focused on creating authentic opportunities for our, our peer assistance leadership program, fourth and fifth grade students who apply to be a pal, to give back to the TOW community. So what they've primarily been focused on is going into our TK Kinder first grade classes and reading to them. We have a different group going in every day of the week, but, and they rotate over the months, but they spend part of their lunch giving back to the little kids. It is a highlight of the kids' week, both the fourth and fifth graders and the littles. And if you ever get a chance to see it, it will be the highlight of your week too. We also have our green team this year continuing, uh, and then new this year. And this is, these are my favorites because it really speaks to, um, my favorite ones to talk about, not my favorite kids. It speaks to how, uh, they have agency and voice. The third grade group knew that they wouldn't be able to be a part of the fourth and fifth grade green team because they're not fourth and fifth graders yet. So they came with a list of names and asked for permission to start their own club. They've met now with Gloria Harwood, the Director of Sustainability from the district, multiple times. They have a campaign that they plan on starting to get all of our staff to compost in the staff lounge and then take it out to the garden to return the compost and make our garden healthier. And they've named themselves the Earth Savers. They sent me a handwritten letter earlier this week that had the logo drawn in pencil that they plan to use on it, uh, with the, their calendar of who will be covering the compost schedule which days. So they are really motivated. We also have our junior master gardeners, third, fourth and fifth graders, who have this year stepped up in our meeting on Fridays to take care of our garden. And Topper's team is the brainchild of a fifth grade student who wanted to have more space to just suggest ways that we can make TOW the best school. And so he, uh, came up with the idea and we have initiated it and that is the group of students that Carter was able to visit today. Okay, our third, our third goal area, safe, equitable and inclusive schools. This is about trying to address the absenteeism that was an area of focus for both elementary schools this year. And so we've taken a multi-pronged approach to that. We have started putting reminders in the weekly email that I send out. Um, everything from just post, posting the calendar a couple of times to make sure that families are mindful of when the breaks are occurring. We've sent tips and tricks and reminders for things like morning routines that can help your kid get out of bed and get out the door on time. Uh, we've also been sending start letters, but in an effort to personalize it because these are still some families that are newer. Some of them are young and this might be their first kid in the school system. We have sent a personal email from our counseling team at least twenty-four hours before we send the official legalese start letter. Um, we're hoping that that helps both make it feel supportive and also really draw attention to the importance of attendance. Uh, we are also working with teacher leaders and staff teams to continue to refine our multi-tiered systems of support, focusing on academics, behavior, SEL and attendance. And we're continuing to train and implement restorative practices across our campus. So, some numbers real quick. I want to just look through some of the numbers that come from our MTSS referrals, our i-ready growth and our attendance rates. So for MTSS, we are, this is our second year of using an MTSS referral form that our teachers can submit. It's available all the time, so it's not just a periodic, like quarterly report cards. And a teacher can refer for anything, academics, social emotional behavior. This year so far, we've received fifty-one referrals, might be fifty-two this week now, but fifty-one as of last week when I did this. Um, fifty-one referrals via the MTSS referral process. Of those, just to give you a feel for kind of what we're working towards, forty-six of the fifty-one were referred based on social emotional behavioral or self-regulation concerns as a primary area of need. So we know that that's something that's important to our students and our teachers. From that, this is just kind of a sample of what we've come up with. So obviously sometimes that's a tier two or tier three need, which really means it's more intensive and it needs that one-to-one support. It might result in an SST, it might result in counseling immediately beginning with family agreement, of course. Um, but we also started looking at trends and we saw that in first grade in particular, there were, there was a lot of need at the tier one level. So from this data, we used what we're doing with the learner profile around effective communication. And we drafted a plan for what tier one interventions could look like across all of the classes. We then also looked at, okay, what can we do for some students who may be classroom level, classroom lessons aren't quite enough? We have a tier two plan and then we have a plan to reanalyze the data and say, okay, are they getting it now? And if not, what can we do next? So, that's just a sample of how we're using it. Again, because we know counseling is an, an area that we want to focus on, based on the data. I just want to highlight our tier two and three services. We have about ninety students who have received individual and or group counseling so far from our counseling team. We also have tier one services that are, all students are accessing. That includes classroom lessons and or assemblies. And the topics range from kindness, mindfulness, how to have positive self-esteem, better active listening, behaviors at school that are expected and unexpected, um, as well as our No Place For Hate activities. So, moving on to our academic data, we do, we're using the i-ready still. Uh, this just shows you our diagnostic one to type, diagnostic two growth. This is in math. We've moved from nine percent in tier three to two percent as of January. Um, we've moved our tier one or green, which is at or exceeding from thirty-eight to sixty-four percent. Of course, our goal is to get the green as high as possible. Looking at it by grade level, you'll, you can just see, um, how it breaks down. We see first grade, our primary grades, but first grade in particular in math, and you'll see this again in reading, is an area that we're wanting to look at more deeply. In reading, we've gone from eight percent to four percent in tier three and we've gone from fifty-two percent to seventy-three percent in tier one as of the January midpoint. Again, in reading, what was, what's important to see is that our, we're, we're seeing growth everywhere. But in first grade, we know that that cohort has just a little bit more need. So just as an example, right now, we're currently planning a meeting with our fifth grade, fourth and fifth grade, but fifth grade first, because we see that they're doing well right now. And we want to look at if there's a way to potentially not take all of the resources away, but reallocate some of our supports with win time to first grade where there's a much more significant need in literacy. And so looking at, can we use some of the time that we have additional aids to support there? That's the kind of work that the data allows us to think about doing. For attendance rate, right now we're tracking right at ninety-five point nine, ninety-six percent for the year. The, um, the graph from Panorama, which is a super helpful tool, just shows us a couple of the times in the year where we dip low. Of course, it's right around holiday breaks. Um, and then it also shows you the start letters we've sent by grade level and how many of those have now resulted in a second letter. So the great news is a lot of the initial warning letters are at this age doing the, the job they're meant to do, which is to warn them, hey, can you make sure you get to school? And then last of all, I just wanted to shine a light on what I love so much about working with the top of the world team. And that's just the it factor, the whole child, everyone owning it. Um, it's something special. It's something special about everyone in Laguna, but definitely at top of the world, uh, getting to work along people who just really want to be there for kids and for families. Relationships truly matter. The staff cares about each other and you will, I mean, every person is thinking through the lens of the whole child. So, uh, it's just, it's truly, it's a fantastic place to get to collaborate and show up for work every day. Just a quick overview as we're thinking about where we go next. It's a lot of it is the continuing, it's creating space and carving out time for the staff to be thoughtful about what is, what's the next thing that we tackle? What do we, how do we next serve our students and our families best? So whether that's thinking about creating space for more unit design, whether it's looking at additional ways to integrate Vapa into classrooms, or thinking about how we continue to refine our counseling supports or our restorative practices. I think we're in a great place where we just have a dynamic team and everyone's continuing to think, what can we do next, next to serve students? And with that, not quite under 15. But I almost made it. I have some, I have time for questions now.
Thank you. Do you have questions?
Oh, and I meant to tell a story.
Okay.
Can I tell a story real quick? This is just so heartwarming. This morning I had the pleasure, well, I get to do morning announcements almost every morning. And this morning, a fifth grade student walked into the office to do the announcements and I happen to know her well enough to know that she, like me, gets anxious when she has to speak with a microphone. Took me like three years before I was ready to even do P A announcements and you're in a room with closed doors. And she walked in and had her script ready. And I mean, she was like, hey, wait, where, are you, am I saying? And I was like, no, you say everything on your script. Okay. Do you say this? No, honey, you do all of the words on your script. I'll go first and I'll hand it to you. Where do I say the pledge? I'm like, right here. Can you read it? It's on the wall. Okay. Nervous. And I was now nervous for her because I happen, again, happen to know that she is very timid in the classroom. The first time I met her as a new student, she literally like shut down because I said hello to her and it was in a whisper. So she gets, I get the P A going. I hand it to her and I'm expecting it to maybe fall apart. I'm like, okay, I'm going to swoop in. And as soon as she started talking, I'm like, oh my gosh, is she like M C? Calm, collected, fantastic. Not the point of the story though. Point of the story is I give her a dolphin card. I'm really excited. I open the door to usher her out. Nikki, Paula, who else? Help me out. Lauren, Suzie, standing up applauding. As because, and the, the reason I love this is because it's not about the fact that she did a good job on the P A, it's about, about the fact that they all know her well enough that they knew that her doing a good job on the P A was worthy of applause. We've never applauded for a kid who's done the P A before. Uh, it does, it's not, it's just something student council does. It's not, it's just something student council does. So that to me is like that moment of what's so special about being at an elementary school is that a fifth grader who's only gone to our school for 107 days, is already known well enough that the entire office staff knows it's worthy of a round of applause that she was able to do it with a calmer voice than I just did this.
Thank you for the story. Now, do we have any, any questions?
Oh, sorry.
I, I have just a quick question, which is going to make me sound a little bit like a broken record. First, thanks. You always have these great reports and they're really fun to hear. So the, the one thing that, um, I note in the data is that from third grade to fourth grade and reading, we go from 82% in tier one to 68% in tier one, doing pretty well in reading according, you know, and that next to, you know, maybe state averages and whatever. On the other hand, I see sort of a drop in one of my ongoing, you know, kind of concerns is the, the sort of lack of, um, requirements for students to actually read books. And so, um, I, I know that when my son was at top of the world, he loved Nikki Romano, who he could actually really discuss books with. And she was very enthusiastic about getting this, the, the kids really engaged with reading. But it does speak to, you know, possibly needing, you know, that, that, those numbers there make me wonder what we can do in the classroom in terms of requiring reading as opposed to just rewarding through like a reading counts. I know we replace that, but yeah. So anyway, I'd like, I wonder if you have anything to say about the numbers there.
Well, I want to be careful just without looking at historical. I don't want to compare cohort to cohort, so I want to, I haven't done that work. I can't, I'm happy to do that and compare how last, how this current fourth grade year looked in third grade, if that makes sense. So that would be my first thing is I would like to dig into the numbers a bit more before speaking to the cohort data. Um, but I do think that we're always being reflective about what do we do to make sure that, uh, reading is both and. It's, it is about choice and fun and making it about the reward. And that's part of the giving students a chance to read across grade levels. Uh, having fourth and fifth graders who are reading to TK students, it really does enlighten them around how much fun and joy it is because they see TK kids, Kinder and first as well, just light up with a good book. So I think part of it is that, and then part of it is continuing to be reflective about our processes and the curriculum we're using with reading to make sure that we're doing both. But I'm happy to get the cohort data specifically and pass it along to Dr. Gloria.
Yeah. Well, thanks. That's helpful. I mean, I just in general think that we should be requiring students to read a lot more. So that's my point. Thank you.
I wanted to follow up on the cohort question, uh, with the first grade cohort. The numbers for the, the yellow, the approaching or the, you know, nearly approaching and then at or above in both math and reading kind of stand out as you, um, noted. The, the issue is not with the red tier. Sometimes you, you would say, okay, well, there's a larger than average amount in that red tier. Are we seeing the same cohort data at our other elementary school? Like have you? And would that be an area to look into if we have larger factors versus just?
Happy to look at that and connect with Julie, Dr. Hatchell about that. I know we were aware even with the Kinder cohort, again, each cohort is unique. And so as we were moving them up, sometimes you know that you, just like you have a bubble group with enrollment size, sometimes you have bubble groups that are either higher and or struggling in certain areas. So again, that's where we're, when we look at that data, part of it is also thinking, how do we shift resources? Or what resources can we bring to bear, knowing that this is a unique subgroup within our?
This is our smallest first grade cohort, cohort, Dr. Valori, that we've had. This is smaller than our current kindergarten classes, first grade cohort is our smallest class ever, right? Yeah. So we could have an end factor is what you're saying.
Yeah, we're, I think we Okay.
Is quite small. But I think the, the key is, and I think that, um, Principal Schooler is kind of mentioning it. It's looking at the cohort, you really have to look at where they ended. I think member Perry actually brought this up at one point too, where we were asked, talking about like, how do they start the next year? Right? So where they end, um, and then where they start and moving the students up into green, and out of red, and obviously, you know, the, the goal is definitely getting them out of red. But, um, where, when we restart the year and they take their next year's assessment, everything shifts back because it's the next grade level, um, standards, right? So if it's a group that has historically been low year over year, that's, that's context, right? That we want to look at because then as we're talking about resources, we know that they very well may need more resources going into the next year because they struggled in the year prior. Maybe their skills aren't as strong. Uh, they might be in green, but maybe they're really, you know, green, but closer to yellow, right? And so
I like the concept of resource allocation because we clearly have something to work on there. That's a different, you know, I got some different dynamics than, than all the other cohorts. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful presentation. I'm so excited about like the third grade earth savers taking their own initiative and you're listening to that and, and, um, I think giving those choices of the art teselations and the history of music and giving choice, I'm really happy with all of it. And I wondered, um, with having a, a full-time Vapa tosa now, about how many art lessons a month does a fourth grader get?
A fourth, well, so some of those aren't going to be through the art tosa because a lot of our teachers also embed those into their classroom lessons themselves. So there's art in some capacity or another. I would say in the fourth grade, fourth or fifth grade classroom, probably weekly, not always necessarily, um, in an art classroom or in the separate classroom with that type of instruction, but it can be online art using tech tools. It is embedded within what they're doing with graphic design and the, uh, like edge of protocols that they may be using. And then it happens within the classroom setting and or with Sarah Wolsey or our partnerships with Lamb or Art Masters. The other thing that we do have that some, again, this isn't a universal, it's more of an option, but we have opened up the art classroom to students for lunch and or recess, uh, multiple times a week. Student, so students are thrilled to go in there and she'll service, uh, during lunch, anywhere from about 20 to 40 students, per lunch group typically. So she has a pretty packed house when the classroom doors are open. So just depends, some, some students get far more actually than others because of interest. And then everyone has a baseline that I would say they're getting at least one with her, but also multiple throughout the week because of the classroom instruction.
Yeah, I love that it's opened up during lunchtime. So you're saying that each class maybe gets one a month from Sarah.
Dedicated from her and others may get more because teachers can often. So I'm saying like, I would say the baseline, you're not going to see less than that, but you may see more.
Because I, I think last year she said each class got one, at least one a month. So I was thinking with a full-time person there, it would be twice a month.
Doubling. Well, the, the, when we're opening our doubling, part of it is doubling the, her physical presence, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the lessons themselves for every classroom double because she's offering additional opportunities for students. So it might be project-based, it could be, again, opening the classroom was a priority for us because we want her to also use her art space as a safe place for kids to be. And so having her as that, and then she's also doing some of the coaching support with teachers. So it may not be FaceTime with, with the students, but supporting teachers or, or the grade levels to design their own art-based work. Again, like I said, even the, some of the collaboration that she does with Carrie Robé. So they were talking about doing some, you know, tech-based art projects. She was working with the fifth grade teachers recently. This would be a time where they probably would have gotten more than just one. They were helping, she was helping them design using, I believe, Canva, but some online art and art concepts, doing their Jogathon, uh, they did their Jogathon shirts and/or they were also doing the holiday winter marketplace designs. So she's, you know, but in those moments, she's, it's not just art. She's talking about design concepts and how they can make that most suitable for advertisements for a winter market. So in that moment, she needs more than one time per month. Does that make sense? Because they need to have a couple in order to finish the actual task. So it just kind of depends.
And I'm looking at, like, I'm looking at her, uh, Ms. Wolsey's calendar. Like today, I think it looks like she was in six classrooms. Uh, like, but then earlier this week, she was at La Pappa, uh, doing, the kids were doing an art. So she may not have seen any classes on Monday, right? So it varies day to day. But typically when I'm, when I'm looking at what she's doing, she's anywhere from three to six lessons a day, which is a lot to squeeze in. You're doing different grade levels, different classes. It's quite a bit. So sometimes it is like she's supporting a teacher, like co-teaching. Sometimes it's her alone. It just depends on what she's doing. But it's pretty consistent that when I look at both of our art toses, they're seeing three to six, three to four or five classes a day, depending on other events that are going on.
And there's also the additional, like we, she, they already did the El Moro. We're going to do the top of the world, the family art night. She's helped collaborate with our D E I team around how we can embed D E I and art together. Uh, she's collaborated with Nikki around book selection, art projects. So again, some of that isn't always going to be as visible in her calendar, but it absolutely leaves a mark on the experiences that the kids are having as it pertains to both art and all of the other integration of our priorities.
Besides, so, so for the absenteeism, I understand, I, I think it's a great idea to have somebody contact them first before they get that letter.
It's a lovely letter, isn't it?
And, and then what, what else is being done though?
Well, tomorrow I have four SART meetings on my calendar, so I'll be meeting with four families and we'll sit down. We have a contract that is a little more kid-friendly and family-friendly. Again, at this age, we typically, it's going to be rare that what we're wanting to do is send somebody out to DART or even further to SARB. What we want to do is in-house really offer the supports. So we've had counselor contracts, we'll do family phone calls to try to make a plan around what's getting in the way of either on-time attendance or regular attendance. And then, like I said, the SART meetings I have are going to, tomorrow I'll be just sitting with families, kind of understanding what's the obstacle to attendance. Sometimes the obstacle is that they had really cool trips and sometimes the obstacle is a kid that got sick a lot this year. And so knowing what's going on helps us understand how we can be supportive and also make sure that families know that a priority is coming to school.
That's wonderful. And I know whatever they say, you'll be supportive and try to help find ways so their child gets to school.
That's the goal. Yep.
Thank you for an excellent report. I love your enthusiasm. And thank you for all the data-driven, uh, material for us. I have a hard time not knowing what the number is. Uh, I can figure out the percentage, but if I don't know what the, what the number is, particularly if it's a small number, it's just confusing to me. And so I just hope in the future that you would put the number in.
Which one? Sorry.
I'm just looking at the reading.
Oh, the percentages?
You have, yeah, they're all the, they're all the percentages, but I don't know what, what the number is.
Like what the actual raw number of students is that's in that category?
Yeah. And I didn't know that the first grade class was small at El Moro. But I, maybe if I had the number, it would stand out to me, but otherwise it's, it's all excellent. And thank you for being data-driven.
Happy to provide that if that's something that I can get that to Dr. Valori, if that's.
Thank you, Megan. I appreciate the fact that you're focusing on increasing student voice and participation. I think based on what Carter said, it's obviously, obviously impacting the students and that they feel that relationship with the teachers because we have emphasized that. And so I, it's nice to see it come to fruition. I appreciate, um, based on some of the board members' questions, that you, the, that the data is so open and transparent. Because I think probably in other school districts, that doesn't occur because you come to the board, you want everything to look like it's all high numbers. So you sort of hide that somewhere and our principals here don't do that. So you do get some of those harder questions because it's, it's very valid data and it's, it's very real data. And I wanted to recognize that. And then, um, I just think that your enthusiasm for your school is contagious and I'm sure that affects your students. And one last comment, I think what you were reporting to, uh, on the question about, uh, the Vapa and when we provide the coaching to teachers and we push it out into the classroom, I think that helps to, to show students that it's not like an art class that you go to, but it's, can be in your everyday life. So I'm really appreciative that Sarah's had the time to do that this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of work to do those reports. We are appreciative of, of all the work that our principals put in to, to bring us these reports. Information, oh, sorry, public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening, um, item seven. Do we have public comment on, A, the public hearing? Presentation of the Classified School Employees Association, Chapter 131 and Laguna Unified School District's joint proposal for the 2024-2027 Collective Bargaining Agreement and announcement of a requisite public hearing.
I see none.
So we would open the public hearing. The board members can comment if they choose. Okay, then I close the public hearing. And we have a public hearing, um, seven B. Again, we, any public comment on seven B?
Seeing none.
Okay, public hearing presentation of Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association and Laguna Beach Unified School District's joint proposal for the reopeners to the 2023-2026 Collective Bargaining Agreement and announcement of a requisite public hearing. So open the public hearing. Comment? No board member comments to close the public hearing and move to section eight, information items business. Is there a public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Um, you'll note tonight's monthly financial report is through the month ending in December. Two things that I would like to call out in this report as it pertains to the November one that we just saw last month. One is if you note on the bottom of the, bottom left of the first page, in the end of your fiscal projection, we're trending a positive growth in fund balance of a little over $300,000. That's a improved position based on November's trend, which had us a decline of a little over $30,000. So small numbers, but it does show again, our positive, uh, financial growth and trending for the year. And then also on this report that you didn't see in November is the O P E B, the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust that we had set up. You'll note that in the quarterly report, and again, that also goes through the end of You'll note that in the quarterly report, and again, that also goes through the end of December last, in 23, we saw good returns from our investment. And in, in total, we've seen roughly 1.1 million in earnings and we've contributed a little over 3.1 million and that's where you see our net position of 4.2 million. So it is a conservative trust, but we are seeing good returns and I just want to make sure the board knows that it's in this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dixon? It's nice to hear the words, good returns. It has been. Thank you. Information, item nine, instructional services. Do we have any public comment on mid-year report update on the 2023-2024 Local Control and Accountability Plan?
I do not see any people wishing to comment.
Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. I've invited up Dr. Kennerberg and Dr. Keller here to, to present with me this mid-year update. We do this each year around this time, we do a little mid-year update to our LCAP. Some of this data that we'll share with you around our three, our three LCAP goals, which is that plan that we develop every spring is that you'll, you have seen it before in last week's weekly update. At the pretty, very extensive, much more detailed report than what you'll see today. So there's lots of places if you haven't had a chance to read through all of it. Doctor, shout out to Dr. Kennerberg who's here, who's, who creates that report. Does an amazing job gathering up the data and putting the visuals together and, and the, making the connections for everyone to see and read. But we're going to kind of give a summary of some of that data which you, which you have seen before and also have a backup from last week's weekly update. So I'll, I'll just start with just the first couple of slides here. We're gonna use scene to the, to the clicker. You know, the, these, this is our, our general demographics, student population here of our students currently. And Laguna Beach Unified, the different student groups, which we'll talk a little bit more specifically about later in the presentation. But as we move through the next, the next slide, we still have these three goals that we have here on college and career readiness, social emotional competency, positive self-identity, and then having a safe, equitable, inclusive schools. We do break these out into smaller priorities, which, which you saw from a schooler and they kind of focus in on some of the different areas we're doing around early learning. Having safe schools. Our MTSS intervention programs continues to be a very high priority, mental health. Having positive student attendance, positive student behavior. So all those remain priorities. One of the newer things that we've been focusing on the last couple of years, as you know, here on the next slide, is our learner profile, which is really the framework for the future. As, as we're working with staff around providing these type of learning experiences that are authentic and relevant. So kids see that connection that's meaningful, that it feels inclusive to them. But it's also very personalized and provides skill-based or competency-based, provides, and provides skill-based or competency-based. Those types of experiences we're working with teachers, we think really have a big impact on all the data we'll talk tonight. And it also gives them the skills to move forward and whatever they end up deciding to do when they leave us. Whether that's being, you know, skills that include effective communicators, collaborators, creative problem solvers. But this has really been the center of, of a lot of that work that we're doing. So I'll hand it over to Dr. Kennerberg to talk first about, for one.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mayberry. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you tonight. I have the privilege of sharing with you an update on our progress towards reaching goal number one, which addresses college and career readiness. Some of the driving actions that have supported implementation of the work that went towards helping students achieve this goal over the past three years include providing differentiated and rigorous learning opportunities for students across a wide variety of areas that facilitate collaboration, creativity, problem-solving and critical thinking, among others. Designing and implementing expanded learning opportunities for our students, emphasizing enrichment, developing targeted academic support and intervention, expanding college and career-based services and coordinating early learning programs. Some of the key success metrics that we will talk about tonight include that ELA and math performance data has improved from beginning to mid-year based on our I-Ready Diagnostic Assessment. This year we did assess K-10 at the mid-year, so you have expanded data. Additionally, less than 5% of all first semester grades were Ds and Fs. That encompasses the, the middle and high school levels. And unit design CTE and Authentic Exploratory Resource Courses continue to provide high levels of authentic and relevant learning experiences for our students. So we'll share some examples of those tonight as well. Our first metric that we're going to address is our I-Ready mid-year data. This shows our K-10 students, this is 1,848 students total. And as you can see, 91% of our students scored within the tier one and two range while 9% remained in tier three. We were thrilled to see a 3% increase in the students moving out of tier three and into tiers one and two. Based on the grade level bands from K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9, 10, our students improved anywhere from 3% to 5%. So we did see growth across all of those different grades, all of those different grade. 62 students total were able to exit tier three in response to the interventions in place. To give you some comparable data, we ended the year, last year, with 8% of our students scoring within tier three. So you can see we're almost at that target right now at the mid-year point. So this is really encouraging and promising data for how we anticipate our students will perform when they test again at the end of the year. When we break this down a little bit further by bands, and you can see the beginning of the year data in the top. And then the mid-year data is that second band underneath. You can see some great growth in the number of students scoring within tier one, which is that on to above grade level band. And as, as is always the goal, we want to see a reduction in the red tier three band. The yellow tier, tier two, is a little bit tricky because you will see movement there. You will see students moving out of tier two into tier one. But you will also see students moving out of tier three into tier two. So tier two is that transitional band. So our goal for the end of the year is to ideally meet or exceed last year's final data. Last year, we had 77% of our students end the year in tier one. So hopefully we can reach or surpass that. That is absolutely our goal in reading. When we take a look at our mid-year math progress, again, we saw a 6% increase in tiers one and two from the beginning of year to mid-year point. We currently have 92% of our students placing within the tier one and two band and 8% of students placing within the tier three band. When we look at our different grade level spans, we saw anywhere from 3% to 6% growth within the unique bands there, starting at K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and then 9, 10. We were exceptionally thrilled to see that 107 students combined have now exited tier three. So really some tremendous growth in math and that has been an area of focus for all of our schools. So students are responding positively to the interventions in place. To give you a frame of reference, last year we ended the year with 6% of our students scoring within the tier three band. So we're definitely on track to ideally continue to exit students from tier three and hopefully reach or surpass last year's performance. When we look at our K-10 student growth in math by tiers, again, you can see quite a jump from beginning of year to mid-year. 46% up to 65% in tier one. And we were able to reduce tier three from 14% to 8%. To give you an idea of where we were last year at the end of the year for K-10, we had 78% of our students scoring within tier one and 6% within tier three. So we have a little bit of work to do in math to get up to that point. But we are continuing to see students improve and exit interventions and continue to grow and meet their personalized growth targets that I-Ready sets for them. I know that grade 11 math is an area of focus this year, so I did want to take a moment to speak to that. Our 11th graders are participating currently in mid-year math testing. They are taking what is actually a mock CASP exam. So it's called the CASP Comprehensive Interim Assessment. And it is a full-scale mock CASP test, which has the multiple choice component as well as six performance tasks. So it's very robust. The reason it's not yet prepared for tonight is because the students are still working on it. It involves actually hand-scoring each individual test. But the results from that will give us a lot of insight as to how we project our students, our 11th grade students will perform on CASP math this year. So we look forward to seeing those results and using the reports and the data to inform instructional decisions moving into this latter part of the year. Course grades continue to shine this year. Our results at both the high school and middle school levels are within 1% of last year. But as always, the goal is to continue the number of students succeeding in these classes, ideally with As and Bs and reducing the number of students in the D or F range. So this year at the high school, we saw a 1% improvement in both of those areas. So 1% increase in As and Bs and 1% decrease in Ds and Fs this year. So that's very promising. At the middle school level, we also saw a low percentage of students receiving D or F grades as the total grades for the school. And we saw a 1% increase from last year in the overall AB grades. And DF grades are identical to last year at this time. We're thrilled to offer our students the opportunity to earn early college credit through our partners at Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College. This year, we have 218 students who took courses between summer and fall of this year. And of course, there are students who are currently taking classes in the spring semester. So we will have that data for you when they have completed their courses. But based on summer and fall enrollment and course participation alone, 218 students earned 519 college credits. This is actually quite a change from last year, a jump of 80 students. So we really are seeing students take advantage of these opportunities. Another way that students can earn college credit in high school is through participation in our CTE program. Some of our on-campus CTE pathway courses can earn early college units through articulation agreements with the Orange County Community Colleges, primarily Saddleback College. Current data indicates that the potential early college units earned could be 566 combined total units. And this is 189 students who are accessing this opportunity. So that's really impressive and we're thrilled that our students are not only investing in CTE pathways, but following their pathways to the point where they're able to earn college credit for them through those capstone courses.
Are there CTE courses in business?
Yes.
Yes, there's, Elisa Miguel offers for our, for CCA. That's the location that the Business Entrepreneurship class is located at.
Advanced placement courses continue to be another way that students can access early college credits. This year we have 837 enrollments, which is really high. Last year's enrollments were 849. So even with declining enrollment, you can see the course enrollments remain high. A particularly encouraging data point here is that 54% of our current LBHS students have taken at least one AP class during their high school careers. This is an increase, last year, 47% of our students had taken one or more AP courses. So we can see that our students are continuing to feel confident in their ability to challenge themselves and take higher level college courses. So we continue to support our students in these endeavors and hope that students continue to enroll in courses that challenge and interest them. You have heard Mr. Morrison present to you in the past about our LBUSD unit design. This program is continuing and it's been highly successful. Teachers come together and collaborate to reimagine their units of study. They start with inquiry, driving questions, and then really think about how to create content that is relevant to students, that is meaningful, that is highly engaging and that has real-world application. To date, we've had 110 participants. And we have another 31 teachers joining the spring unit design cohort. It is anticipated that by this time next year, 70% of our total LBUSD teachers will have designed one or more units. And we have many stu, many teachers who are coming back and designing multiple units because they're seeing the positive responses that they're getting in their classrooms. In an effort to engage students and provide opportunities for relevant learning experiences that are things that have real-world application, things that they will need to know for life beyond high school, projects such as the Flow Week Student Digital Resume give students the opportunity to cultivate skills and put together a product that they can actually take out and present to either future employers or organizations that they would like to become a part of. So this particular video that I'm going to show you is an example of the Flow Week project. Students talk about passions, things that drive them and why they should be a part of a nonprofit organization that aligns with their areas of interest and passion. So this is one of our LBHS recent graduates sharing her digital portfolio.
Hi, I'm Carly Roar and here's my story. I've been playing water polo since eighth grade, which means that I haven't been playing as long as most of my teammates. However, that has not stopped me. Over the last four years, I have given my life to this sport eagerly trying to catch up. I've been blessed with the opportunity to learn from such great coaches and players. And every day I'm getting better. I have developed skills in all aspects of the pool as I can play any position my team needs me to. I'm best at center and center defender because my 5'11" stature helps me dominate the opponent. Outside of the pool, I aim to make an impact on my community. I have found that a big passion of mine is to advocate against teenage substance abuse. I found a way to foster this passion by becoming the secretary of the Strength and Numbers Club, which is a club that fights teenage substance abuse by breaking down societal norms. I work directly with Orange County Healthcare Agency and the local mission hospital to run campaigns in order to detour students from drinking and using drugs. I'm also the editor-in-chief of our high school newspaper, which has led to many great opportunities. I have great spread about the subject of substance abuse. And one of my articles was even published in the local newspaper, Students. I also do directly provide a mentorship to underclassmen, which will allow me to develop many skills such as leadership and the ability to work in a team, which has been very beneficial. All while making an impact on my community and playing water polo, I've managed to receive a 4.0 unweighted GPA, a 4.3 weighted GPA. By the time I graduate, I will have seven AP classes under my belt. I hope this gave you some insights of who I am as a person and I hope to talk to you soon.
The projects such as this really give students the opportunity to reflect on who they are as a person, how they want to present themselves to the world, and most importantly, what matters to them. So they, they can really create a pathway for themselves that's aligned to their interests and their passions and the areas in which they want to contribute to the world in a positive way.
Hi.
Oh, sorry Carly, we saw you already. Thank you. This year was also a really exciting year in the area of environmental literacy. As you know, we welcomed a new environmental, environmental literacy coordinator, Gloria Harwood. And under her leadership, our students have been able to engage in some amazing energy conservation efforts and stewardship. You've heard about the green teams as Ms. Schooler described. And integration throughout the curriculum, really helping to build out units, especially in the area of science. And students are working to solve real-world problems and taking a look at what's going on with climate change and the environment and coming up with alternatives to essentially save the planet. Not to oversimplify that, but that's a big deal. They're really thinking about the future and the contributions that they can make. And another really And another really interesting area that Ms. Harwood has helped our teams to discover is nature centric interventions. And what that means is they're aligning, aligning the environment to MTSS, to students wellness and mental health. Students are getting outside and gardening. They're taking walks outside as a strategy for self-regulation and helping them to calm down and be able to talk through perhaps a problem that's bothering them. They're getting outside and changing the scene. And they're finding that students are responding really positively to, to this area. And as you can see here, students are getting really passionate about growing plants. And you've seen our amazing gardens, obviously, and the work that's happening there. And so students are getting really invested. This is very high interest for them and they're all taking an active role at their schools to do their part for the environment. We continue with our expanded learning programs. Thank you so much for allowing us to move ahead with planning for this year's lead program. We're very excited, although we're in the initial planning stages. To date, we are looking to offer 132 classes this summer. We have 25 LBUSD teachers. This is an increase of about eight teachers from last year. So a lot more of our staff are looking to get involved. Many of them are teaching up to six unique courses this year. Just to give you a little preview of what we have coming. Some of the courses that we plan to offer range from fashion design, different book clubs that target a specific series to really draw students into a particular author and have thematic projects around that book. Video production, forensics lab, and three different Taylor Swift themed courses, which admittedly I might want to audit myself. But a lot of really creative ideas coming from our teachers this year. And I think they are putting a lot of thought into what is going to be appealing and exciting for the students. And I look forward to seeing these classes come to life and seeing our students have an exceptional experience through enrichment. We also continued our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club for our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. This is a year-long program that provides not only a nine-hour school day for qualifying students, but also a school break, full day camps, as well as six weeks of camp in the summer. So this year, we have 72 participants and this is TK through sixth grade in this program where they receive homework assistance. They have a lot of social emotional learning activities as well as interest-based clubs that are actually designed based on what the students are interested in exploring more. So we love this program and we're having great response from our participating families. And we look forward to continuing to grow it. Last but not least, there are a lot of exciting things happening in the world of early learning opportunities. TK expanded this year and will continue to expand next year as we add two more months working towards our universal TK, which will be coming up. Our Learning Link Program continues to provide families the opportunity to come in and work on those essential foundational child to development skills. And most excited, most exciting for us is the launch of our preschool program coming in the fall. So we have a lot of really amazing opportunities for our youngest learners and look forward to bringing new students into our district and continuing to get them acclimated early on into our schools and becoming a part of our culture. I want to really take a moment to thank you, the board, for your support of all of the program supports and services that are aligned to Goal One. As you can see, these actions have had a really profoundly positive impact on our students. And we look forward to continued growth in all of these areas for every one of our students. I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Keller, who's going to provide an overview of our Goal Two progress. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, excuse me, good evening. Thank you so much for having, having me here today, esteemed board and superintendent and the executive team. And Carter, I really appreciate what you said about relationships. I think that's really important and it's really the through line that you'll see in the Goal Two. I mean, this really is a priority for us. We've committed a lot of resources and effort around making social emotional health a foundation of student success. And I really appreciate that viewpoint. We're going to be talking about a few of the highlights for Goal Two and some important data that reflects some of the successes in this area. Most notably, that like I just said, the student mental health, student wellness is at the center of our thinking. And we know that's the foundation for academic and life success. We use a variety of evidence-based approaches to ensure that we're cultivating positive safe spaces for young people and our staff and our families. That's through PBIS and restorative practices, which we'll highlight today. We have a very, we've made a very substantial investment in the professionals that are qualified to support our students, namely our school counselors. We have, we have nine school counselors serving, serving our student body, plus some additional specialist counselors, a robust school psychology team, a student sports specialist team, or social workers or credential school counselors. Lots of really important, highly qualified individuals providing a system of care. And then lastly, want to talk through, actually I would talk through first, are the, the impacts of the systems and the focus on getting students to school into our environments. That's the attendance focus. And when they're here, making it a safe place, ensuring that we have systems of care where students are not being excluded unnecessarily through suspension or expulsion. So I will, would like to highlight this data first and foremost. If you, this is, uh, this is, in the middle column is our chronic absenteeism data mid-year for this year. And right now, we have 90% of our students are, are what we consider to be not chronically absent, meaning that they're missing 10% or more of their school days. This is district-wide data. I know that member Perry asked a question about top of the world's information, but this is our district-wide data. We've made a substantial improvement in that over the, over the previous years. We continue to have a robust system where we're tracking student attendance real time and have a system where we're trying to make direct phone calls and outreach to families, try to understand the situation, and then have layers of more robust intervention as students, as students may have more challenges. We want students to be in their seats and we know that we can provide high quality care when they're here. Our average daily attendance in, in kind is also improving year over year. And we continue to focus on that positive attendance piece. And then on the discipline side, our, our suspension rates are, are low relative to other school districts. I mean, we have, we don't have substantial discipline problems in our school district, in comparable school districts. Last year, we ended the school year with a 2.2% suspension rate. Mid-year this year, we're at 1.6% suspension rate. We are hopeful that that, I mean, our goal would be that that would be zero. So now we work in human services, students interact with each other in different ways. They have like access to lots of different freedoms in, in school and in life. And so, you know, part of the discipline process is, is using methods to try to teach appropriate pro-social behavior. And so that's the work that happens around discipline and we continue to realize really strong, strong results. And we want, we want to use alternatives to suspension whenever possible. We use that progressive discipline strategies at each school site to ensure that students can stay in school whenever possible. One of, one of the main areas that we're using to, to set really clear expectations is through positive behavior interventions and supports. You heard about that from top of the world. The focus of this is an evidence-based approach where teams of individuals will set clear expectations. Students will be reinforced for appropriate behaviors. We want to make sure that that's known and clear. And then when there's infractions, we want to teach ways that students can get back on track. And so that's, that's the approach generally and we, and, and we continue to refine and improve our systems around, around PBIS. The purpose is so students feel safe. I mean, that's one of the biggest indicators for us is that, how do you, do you feel safe at school? And that's really important. And one element of our PBIS work is through direct professional development and integration of restorative practices. You may have heard about with the top of the world presentation earlier. Restorative practice is a system of supports that helps us to ensure that the youth voice is, there's a structured conversation around what norms do they want in school? What norms do they want in their classroom? What do they want learning to look like? And when there's social conflict or social difficulty, what are the ways, the strategic methods that teachers might implement to help facilitate a conversation around restoring the relationship? How do we get back to baseline? How do we improve our relationships and strengthen, strengthen our, our school community? And so the whole purpose of restorative practice is to increase that sense of safety, so to help with social problem solving and to increase that sense of belonging. Our, our broad array of counselors, our nine school counselors, our coordinator of family engagement, our coordinator of college and career readiness, all credential counselors, five school psychologists, four student sports specialists. Some, we have other staff members that are also qualified mental health professionals. We provide a lot of direct counseling contacts and indirect services for students. And we measure this to really try to, as, as touch points, to really try to, to get better every year. And we want students to know who their counselors are and to know that they're a resource for them, a confidential, safe resource. Sometimes they're not always going to like the supports that are offered or provided because it may be something that's uncomfortable for a student. But in the long run, we're always following legal parameters, district policy, and the appropriate professional supports for students. So our team is incredible. We have over 5,500 touch points with students and by mid-year this year, we're on track for over 10,000. That's pretty typical for, for this year, although we're, we have less students enrolled this year. Some of the, some of the highlights for, oops, for some of these services. Academic supports are provided, individual counseling, group counseling supports. We've over 30 mid-year, over 30 students who have had risk assessments completed, meaning that we're assessing for self-harm risk or, and, and providing appropriate supports in that time. The indirect services happen to be like case management for, for special programs. Student success team, which are problem, complex problem solving meetings, things like that. Parent contacts, consultation with outside professionals, things like that. Our counseling team, many highlights to celebrate, and these are detailed in your report that you have from this week. But we, we, our, our team not only works with student, student health and wellness, but they try to support staff wellness, excuse me. And they do mental health Mondays. They provide intervention lessons in classrooms, so SEL lessons, tier-one interventions, teaching students about healthy coping strategies. We provide a variety of different parent workshops that have been highlighted through the Family Resource Center this year. Many different awesome, awesome events for families. Yes, sir. Like gravelly. So nice, thank you. At our, yeah, he's a credential counselor, you saw that in action. And we're really proud of the ongoing work and with the board support. And we've had generous donations from community members through school power to help us fund some of these really cool spaces that we have for students. So at the high school, we were proud to do a ribbon cutting this year on, on our well space. This is an initiative that started across the county in partnership with the Orange County Department of Education and the, and Chalk Children's Hospital to really create these safe spaces where we can do a variety of different things. Group work with students, prevention work, healthy coping strategy work, all evidence-based materials and, and a warm welcoming environment for kids. And so we're so excited that Megan Humphries, our student sports specialist at the high school, is able to kind of lead that work there. And the students, this is our peer mentor group, they wanted to call it the wave, which is awesome, and that's their logo. So excited, really excited by the space opening. We look forward to cultivating a space at the middle school this summer and hopefully launching next year. And that's it for Goal Two. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chad Mayberry.
Thank you. So we'll move on to Goal Three, which really is focused on around having safe schools that feel inclusive, caring and personalized for students to meet whatever those needs are. One of the priorities, a couple of things that we're seeing within Goal Three that are really important is that we still, there are still opportunity gaps that are with some student populations that we continue to focus on through our MTSS system, our intervention system, which I'll talk a little bit more about. There are, we are seeing lots of growth opportunities, lots of increase in students academics that's allowing them to exit or move beyond some of our interventions and having more flexible options, especially at the secondary level with interventions. And then lastly, our schools continue to prioritize their connections that they're making, right? And their, the positive relationships, we've heard that through all the, both presentations this evening. It's such a priority to make this a relevant, important experience for kids, a place where they feel safe and cared about, which is, we know has to come first before they can learn anything. So this continues to be a priority. This visual here takes, will take a little bit longer to explain than I have tonight. But what it, what it really means is this is our intervention system. And the whole purpose of the intervention system is that we're able to, we have timely responsive interventions for students that are very targeted to what they need. And it goes in cycles, right? And we work through the lens of constantly having cycles of like, what are students, how are they doing? What else do they need? If they're excelling, if they're struggling, and then, and then see what, put an intervention in place to see what happens. And if it, if it works, can we move on and replicate it? And so this is at the heart of what our, a lot of our staff focus in on. We think through the lens of three different tiers. All, what do we do for all students, what do we do for some students? And what do we do for a few students? And that's kind of like those tiers that we talk about. So overall, Dr. Canenberg talked a little bit about this earlier. Through K-10 and ELA, we've served 185 students this year so far, and 159 in math. At the end of the year presentation that we'll do in May, we'll be able to share how many students exited out of those, the ones we've served. The students kind of come and go in and out of that throughout the year, depending on where they're at and what their needs are met. But we'll share more detail on how many kids move, have moved out of that by the, at our end of the year presentation. In the area of reading, this is for English learners. So for English learners, this represents, this, this, you know, you can see on average, overall, these, both of these are at nine and eight percent. This represents 16, 16 students, that 34% represents 16 students that, that are English learners that are in that tier three, meaning that very intensive intervention, which makes sense based on that they're learning a new language. And over math, that represents 13 students that we're providing supports for. Couple of things that are really impactful in this area with our English learners. We have a variety of different curriculum and resources that we provide that are mostly, for the most part, pushed into class and integrated that are listed there. We also have a very specific data management that's for English, for students who are earning, earning English called Elevation. It allows our staff to look at the whole picture of the student and see all the different things that are going on with them. And then we continue to do training for staff. Dr. Canenberg and our ELD instructional coach, Yadira Rojas Reynolds. They do these sessions at lunch. I think by the end of the year, they'll probably have done 25, 30 of them across the four schools. So giving, and they're very specific, teachers come in, they're talking through specific research-based strategies, but also thinking through next steps for their own students that they have at that time. So very, very practical and research-based. The area of students with disabilities. This represents, this is the overall, this is about 11% of our student population. So this represents 73 students for reading and a graph looks a little off there with the 36%, but it represents 72, 76% for, for tier-three intervention for math for students with disabilities. So again, an area, these students have a specific individualized plan that we have a person that works specifically in case managers, their work and all different variety of supports. One of the things you'll see here, the next slide, just a couple of highlights around our special education program. The Irene White coordinates and directs. I always think of the work she does is really around anywhere, anytime. You know, she is, whatever she, the things that you see up here, these intensive literacy interventions, executive functioning, like they're, if it works, they get kids to do it before school, after school, on breaks, in class, in the summer. She'll do it. She'll find a way to make it happen. And then she's always thinking of the parents. As a very innovative parent mentor program that, that we've had for a very long time that she started up, lots of parent education events that she always ties to the interventions. So the parents have the tools to support their students when they're not with us. And then all the work she really started years ago around early learning and the early intervention piece, which really makes an impact. If you put the resources into the early students earlier, which has been a wonderful support of the board to, to help us do that over this last couple of years as we expand to TK and adding to preschool. It's going to really allow us to have those students have earlier interventions, which will have a much longer impact as, as time goes on. For students, the other gap that we, that we typically do see year to year, students are economically disadvantaged, although this is the smallest opportunity gap for students. This represents 26 students for ELA and 27 students for math across K-10. So we look at, we'll look at those students, find out what their different needs are. Sometimes that's just additional counseling, sometimes that's specific resources they need in their home. But we're looking at a wide variety that the students bring to the table and that we can provide that through all the additional, whether it's Family Resource Center or any of our other intervention staff. Ultimately, as I said earlier, right, we're always thinking about the connections with the kids, right? We were thinking of Masloff, Masloff's needs, right? the kids, right? We were thinking of Maslov, Maslov's needs, right? What do they, people need to feel safe and comfortable at our school? And that's what our schools really do, is try to find a connection for them. One of the things you will hear teachers and students talk about more and more at our schools, especially at the secondary levels around pathways, right? Yes, there are CTE pathways at the middle and high school, but also have visual performing arts pathways. They're thinking through that when they're in science, there's a life, there's a series of courses that they can take if they wanted to focus on life science. There's a series of courses that they can take if they want to do more physical science and science. So, really thinking through that, math is thinking through more, and that's more data science versus calculus-based. So, how do we make this connecting and meaningful for students to find out what they like? And again, you see here, like, you see the sports, the expanded middle school program, the after-school program at the elementary level. Kids are, I think the high school probably is, I know there are above more than 45 clubs that they have this year, I think they might be over 50 this year. We, even though we're decreasing in enrollment, we have more students taking AP classes, so that option has remained open through a lot of creative ways. I think we're, I want to say we're at 40, it looks like 47 or 48 AP honor, AP and honors courses at the high school, which is pretty amazing for a school this size. One, one of the parent education ones I wanted to highlight, that the board has done a wonderful job supporting, is this parent education project. This is, they've done this again this year. We continue to continue to have parents sign up for it, and I'm always impressed by it, because there's a commitment, there's a 10-week commitment. We know how busy parents are, we know how much they have going on, just in their taking care of their own kids. And now they're taking the time this year. Right now, we have 49 parents that are doing this, on top of who've done it previous years. Randy Beckley at the middle school had started that as well with, now I think it's Amelia, Miss, no, I'm sure, but, Miss Sony, yeah, Miss Scotty, who also supports her with that, been really successful. And then, as you know, we've continued to expand the Family Resource Center through a wide variety of ways, parent book club, after-school programming, some different seminars. Right now, we're about 300 different families that have made a connection to the Family Resource Center in some way. We obviously expect that to grow a lot more as they become more aware of this resource that's right there available for them, and available to provide resource often outside the typical school hours. So, some next steps we're thinking about around Goal Three, continuing to find these relevant experiences that make school meaningful and connected to kids. We want to continue to focus on absenteeism. We've had, as you saw from Dr. Keller, we're seeing the, it's going in the right direction, but there's still a lot more work to do. And as well as continue, we've seen an increase in direct services with counseling. We know that that's helping. And then lastly, within our MTSS, we've seen notable different successes in different areas. And a lot of that's really around providing flexible and personalized interventions, whether that's at the elementary level, where they have dedicated time, four out of the five days a week at both schools, where they can get different interventions that are specific to their students, or at the middle or high school, which have made significant enhancements to their tutorial periods that allow these very personalized activities for students as well, whether that's through intervention or enrichment activities. So, can, these areas continue to be a focus within Goal Three for our, our students and staff. Well, that will wrap up our mid-year update. We'll open up to any questions for any of our staff.
Thank you. It's a really thorough report and presentation from our three staff members, Dr. Mayberry, Dr. Canenberg, and Dr. Keller. And board members, you have questions regarding the report?
Excellent report. I think we're going in the right direction. I'm very impressed and thankful for all the work that you all do. It's just incredible. I just want to point out about our economically disadvantaged, we have close to 20% of our students are economically disadvantaged, and we have a break coming up, and I keep hearing this, these words, it just makes my ears stand up, that, because the economic kids may not be able to participate in what's, it's because some people are calling it, but it's our mid, mid, mid-winter break. So, I just wanted to remind you all that I, I hope that we get that message through the community. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I was in a meeting with a group of parents that could not say enough positive things about the parent project, just that it was the best thing that they'd ever done, and I'm really proud that we're doing that, and offering, offering so many opportunities, not only for our students, but for families and teachers, so, and other staff. So, wonderful. I was looking at the, the data for our English language learners, our students with disabilities, our economically disadvantaged, and I, I should, I should have asked before, so I don't expect you to answer this right now, but I was looking at our numbers now, and I wondered how much those percentages, I know we've lost many, many, many students. I wondered how those, if those percentages are still the same, or how close they are from the year before COVID, say. You know, like how many economically disadvantaged we had percentage-wise?
Or demographics, it's not a performance, demographic.
Right, not the performance, the demographics.
Demographic-wise, our English learners has got, has, it's a little bit less than it was prior to the pandemic, not much, but a little bit less. I would say, if I remember correctly, students with disabilities, it's about 11%. Now, I want to say it's like 12% or 13%. And then students with economic disadvantage is significantly more. Some of that's due to the pandemic, some of it's also due to how that's defined at the state level. And so, during the pandemic, they, there was not as many, I guess, verified restrictions, how people said that they're fit within that, that, that group. So, that allowed more people to just self-identify, which you may say that maybe that's the more accurate number than it was prior to the pandemic, right, because people are more, more self-identified rather than having to say or show proof that they are economically disadvantaged.
Mm-hmm. So, and, and what about the students with disabilities?
That one's gone, is we're about 1% or 2% below what it was prior. I think we're around, well, the 13%, I want to say, and now we're down to about 11%.
Okay, so, pretty similar.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Dr. Mayberry, I had a comment and a question. The comment, and I really liked hearing about the nature-centric interventions that we heard about under environmental literacy. That was interesting area of exploration in future years. I really liked the picture Joe Badal in the cowboy hat. I noted that when I was looking up close, everybody was in western wear, and then I saw somebody in the back in a cowboy hat. And, okay, on attendance, here's my question for you. So, I was focusing in on chronic absenteeism, much different than regular absenteeism. We know that those are distinct buckets of what's going on with students, and we made some significant improvements in this mid-year figure. So, that I think is, is really interesting. My question is, for chronic absenteeism, are you absent if you just missed one period, like, or two periods, or where for secondary, are you, are you absent? I know it's a simple question, but... The whole day. So, you have to miss all three or six, whatever the, the whole thing is. Okay.
Absences, if there are period absences as well, would you count that at the secondary level? Would you, but when we're looking at students who miss a day, that's...
So, all of this data are full days? Gotcha. Okay. And on the ADA too, I think, you know, that's, you know, some positive growth. Do we expect that will, because we kind of have the winter holidays behind us, so the second half of the year, in my opinion, has less opportunity to miss days. Again, putting chronic absenteeism aside, because that's a different animal, right, than just missing days. Do we feel like we're, are on track to have a really strong number?
I can speak to that, because we actually had some attendance meetings just today, so it's really fresh on my mind. So, we are very optimistic. I think a big part of what you're seeing is the work that's been happening at our school site. So, everybody really made attendance a high priority area this year. We understand there has been a lot at play the past few years, between COVID, recovering from COVID, families who have had continued health issues with RSV and the flu and COVID, the trifecta. We know this is affecting a lot of students even still. So, certain things are within the control of the family and certain things are not. Obviously, we don't want kids coming to school if they're ill and they're not feeling well, but the schools have really been prioritizing educating families, especially as you heard Ms. Schooler say, at the elementary level, where they're saying, you know, this is what an excused absence is, and this is what an unexcused absence is. Because sometimes there's a little bit of confusion about that at the elementary level, where parents might think if they phone it in or report it, that it's excused. That means it's verified, we know where the student is, but we know that the only way that an absence can get excused is for that state-approved list, primarily illness or mental health, or a bereavement day, or something along those lines. So, we are seeing a lot of targeted interventions happening at the school. I know at the high school alone, they've had over 70 meetings with students. If they notice students are habitually tardy, or they're missing periods, they are going to find the student, they are pulling them out, they are having a conversation with them, they're setting individualized goals. And if they're not seeing improvement, then that escalates to a, a school attendance review team meeting, where the family gets involved and they create a more formalized attendance contract. And we're seeing this now at the elementary and middle school level as well, widespread. So, everybody in our district is essentially intervening in the same way. And what that really comes down to is making a point to contact each family individually when there's a concern that first arises. So, they're not waiting necessarily till a student is chronically absent and has missed over 10% or more of the school year. If they see students have three unexcused absences, or six unexcused absences, they're calling a meeting and talking through the barriers to school attendance to see, you know, what, what is causing the students to miss school and what can be done, what supports and resources can we offer. Sometimes it's transportation, other times it's simply telling the students, you know, high school in particular, they say things like, well, there's not parking. Okay, well, what can we do to solve that problem? Could we leave 10 minutes earlier? Things, things like that. And if it's an issue, sometimes at the high school, I've seen them also make schedule changes that better accommodate a student's schedule. If they're having trouble getting there for first period on time, maybe they can adjust their schedule, because some of them do have those flex periods in the day. So, really customizing the support and making sure that everybody has what they need, but also highlighting to parents and students the importance of positive school attendance. We know that that impacts them socially, academically, you know, it affects their relationships, it affects their workload if they come back and they're behind, potentially their stress level if they then come back and they're feeling unprepared. So, again, really just sitting down and understanding that each individual story is unique. I had several attendance meetings today, and each story I heard was quite different from the one before. So, it really is making that connection, getting to know the unique situation, and working collaboratively to come up with a plan.
Great, thank you.
I have a quick comment and a question. My comment, which I made last year, but I have to make, make again, is that the purpose of public schooling is to support democracy, and it's nice to create empathy, but I would love to create all kinds of students like Carter who are engaged. So, rather than empathetic citizens, I would really like engaged citizens and people who are really making the community and the world a better place. And I think that, that, just the difference of that word makes you think differently about what we could potentially be doing. So, I want to throw that out there. The other thing that I wanted to ask about briefly is that, you know, I'm not so sure that how many students are getting an A is very indicative of how students are necessarily doing now, because there's all this data now on grade inflation over the last, you know, decade or so, that's at both the high school and the college level. It's really interesting, those changes. And I wonder if we've looked at that sort of longitudinal data in our own high school around what grades look like maybe 15 or 20 years ago, 10 years ago, and now, and if we see those trends. I mean, it's nice if students are getting As. I just wonder whether it is a picture of student performance, or a picture of changing ways of doing assessment, which may or may not be bad or good.
We've looked, the, I know the high schools looked at it on and off throughout the years, doing comparative. And then, and then they're also obviously looking at it, and all our schools are, like, at different academic data points, because grades is one, you know, important factor when you're looking at, especially the cumulative over multiple years. But something like the IREDDI results, the state assessments, there's a variety of ways that we're looking at AP outcomes. So, we look at the broader picture of like, what does that also look like longitudinally, right? And so, there's a lot of different factors, you know, and, and we also know, another, another one beyond the ones that you mentioned is just the, the intensity to get into college, right? Some kids are, we're so focused on grade, which grades to, because there's this race to nowhere in some cases, right? You can get these great GPAs and not get into state, any state schools. So, that's, you know, that creates this pressure for kids that are really focusing on grades, which is not a, which is different than focusing on learning. And so...
Exactly.
That's the piece that, you know, I think we're all working towards and trying to find that balance, and, and for, especially for high school students, which are so close to college. It's really, it becomes a lot of pressure for the students to think about, how do I get this GPA just a tiny bit higher, knowing that, like, it probably doesn't make that big of a difference on the college side.
Okay. Well, thank you. Those are my exact issues. And that's helpful. I wasn't clear before what I was talking about. I was referring to the learner profile, where we say that we're going to create empathetic citizens, just so you knew what I was, the point I was making before, which I also brought up last year. All right, thank you.
And I have to say that, going back even more years, and you mentioned grade inflation has been a topic here and a concern. So, it's a lot of years. I just wanted to add a couple of comments. I think that we have provided, we have looked at the early learners, as you mentioned, from Irene White, and we've had the Learning Link for a lot of years. And it made me think tonight, when you were making those comments, that, and also when they were talking about the, coming with the preschool, that when I was in classes myself for my early learning preparation, that, that the concept was that the government needed to spend more money on the early years. At that time, the comparison was to, like, community college, and that it's taken a long time to get there. But, you know, with this, with the state now emphasizing that and providing funds for it, it's, it finally maybe has recognized that the, how important those early years are. So, I think we were ahead of the game with what we have tried to provide before there was more funding for it, but it's, it's a critical need. I am, I did have one question. When those three identified groups, is there crossover between those groups? So, can, is a student in more than one cohort? Okay, thank you. And in the expanded report, I really appreciated all the comparative data and the historical data and the charts, and it was really, really informative and, and gave me a lot of knowledge. Thank you. So, we can move on to a couple of action items in Section 10, Business Services. A is approval of a 2024-25 LBUSD Comprehensive District and School Safety Plan. Do we have public comment on this item?
I see none.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. As you recall, at the last regular meeting, we brought the updated Comprehensive Safety Plan that our District-wide Safety Committee works on every year as an information item, and we're bringing it back tonight as an action item. And also, as a reminder, it's, this is an annual requirement, this plan be approved before March 1st every year. So, that's why it times out with that January and February board meeting date. We had not received any questions or comments since the last meeting. However, thanks to Dr. Valoria, we did have an opportunity, and thank you, Carter, to meet with a student superintendent's advisory team, and it consists of the high school, a group of high school students, and we had an open discussion on safety. And though some of the, and a lot of feedback wasn't necessarily specific to the safety plan, I know the board appreciates hearing what the students have to say. And so, I wanted to take just a minute here to talk about some of the highlights of what we heard. So, some of the things we, we heard about was the need for potentially more emergency medical supplies, or at least increasing the awareness of where all the supplies are on the campus. As you know, we have, we do have a lot of supplies, but they are in different locations, and they could be in every room, but if they're not clearly delineated or marked with signage, it could be difficult. And that was really good feedback from our, our team there. There was a suggestion, and we've, we've talked about this with our Safety Committee as well, but I just thought it was great, the students thought of this as well, is that all the sites should take advantage of the people that we have with special certifications, like a CPR certification, and align their site teams accordingly. So, if you have a search and rescue or a triage, there's a lot of different certifications. We talked about avert, the act of violence emergency response tonight, and also the CPR certifications. And also the CPR certifications, and we can, we can design in our site teams accordingly so that we can respond the most efficient and effectively. And also there was, there was a concern brought up over e-bike thefts. And as you know, we do have security cameras throughout all of our campuses, but not everywhere that the students park their e-bikes, there, there's a camera located, pointed in that direction. So that's something that we're able to walk around and audit. There are some creative spots where the e-bikes get parked, but it is certainly, as long as they're surrounding our campus and consistent with our camera policy on having a reasonable expectation of not having privacy, then we're definitely going to look to add that. And we're working with the IT team as of now on looking and identifying potential camera added additions throughout our campuses. And last, and I thought this was really, really cool. The students brought forth an excellent idea about having high schoolers visit the middle school, perhaps during a health class to talk about the dangers of health, of dangers of drug use. And it was a really good discussion and appreciate it. And please thank you again, Dr. Valoria, for the opportunity of giving us that time. And Carter, please send our thanks to the rest of the, the team that helped us. So with that, we proposed that the board approve the safety plan as updated. Again, just with the, the areas being, the updates consist of standardizing districts lockdown procedures. We added the new section related to fentanyl safety. And then, of course, updating all the necessary code and policy references. And I will thank Ms. Weber for that specifically because that's a lot of work and she does it for us every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Have board member questions? Do you want to have a motion to approve? And we have discussion?
At the combined PTA meeting, I brought up at the last meeting the importance of this document that was going to be approved and there was no discussion. Nothing stood out to anyone, but I did ask them to take it back to the individual PTAs.
Thank you. I think it's an excellent document. We appreciate all your work. And I think it's fabulous that you included the students and their part. I was listening, you know, as we all have to the whole night, Kansas City nightmare. And the mayor said that looking around that the kids knew better what to do than the adults. So I'm glad we included kids.
Hi, Mr. Dixon. I did the same with our school power trustees, asked them to bring any safety concerns, ideas or feedback back, back to us and describe kind of what the document does and what was being updated. I didn't hear any concerns, but I'm really glad you brought up the student feedback on the e-bikes because the most feedback that I got was when we had intruders isn't the right word, but when we had people gain access to the campus to, to do e-bike threat theft in the past. So that was the most feedback that I'd had from the community was how could somebody get on our campus and try and steal or potentially steal a bike? And I think we have some constraints. A lot of high schools or middle schools have a locked area or a very secure area on or within their campus boundaries. And what you said about the high schools is, you know, we're, we're different. We have, you know, public access streets running alongside our, our school and, you know, kids park their bikes on, in the public right of way or on our sidewalk. So thank you for being creative, because if that helps them feel safe, then that's helpful, right? We don't want them worried that their bike is going to get, you know, stolen, they're going to be walking home or whatever. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing with us the students' suggestions and comments. That, you know, as Carter mentioned, the, how they, he found the students at top of the world articulate, but we have found for a number of years that our high school students have a lot to contribute and they are, they are very articulate, but they're very self-aware. And so it's, I'm glad you shared that with us. And in keeping with that, I was going to make this comment later, but I recently had heard a real plea with the continual concern with fentanyl and with drugs that are sold as something else. Because our students are inadvertently, they think they might be getting a diet drug they're ordering online. And the message was that when we provide education to students in schools that we need to, the one message is if the medication didn't, wasn't prescribed by a doctor and filled by a pharmacist, don't ever take it. Because it's become such a danger. So it's interesting to me that students wanted to share information at the middle school because that tells me that they're paying attention to these messages. And the other was, as I mentioned to Dr. Valoria, they really averted a major crisis at Ontario Christian School today. Was, would have been a, a school shooting. And the student that they arrested had multiple weapons in his home, thousands of rounds of ammunition. And it was a student who told the principal. So it was going back to what we've been employing our students, see something, say something. And so it was a, a real major feat of preventing something. And that even to the point that the student had timed response times so that if the authorities were called, he, he knew how quickly they would be there. So it just, it's chilling to think that it's power that our students have if they, if we can keep encouraging that message to see something and say something. So but thank you for this, for us having such a thorough document for our staff to use in, in all these areas. And then we have a vote, student vote. Board members all in favor? I opposed, carries five oh. Thank you. We have another business item, 10B approval to award a contract to Runal Clark Architects for architectural services to install a temporary relocatable restroom building at Amoral Elementary School in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand five hundred. Do we have public comment on this item? No public comment. Okay.
Nope, I see none.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. This is for the design contract for the architecture firm, Runal Runal Clarks, to assist us with designing and getting the Division of State Architect approval for placing the temporary portable facility. And I'm going to be careful with my words on how I describe this restroom facility. It is real building materials. There is, it is plumbed infrastructure, electricity. And it is simply just brought nearly fully assembled to the site and then we finish it there. And this will be to support the new preschool program that we have coming next year. And it's also one of the plans that was identified in the facilities master plan. And so this is, with approval tonight, we will be able to get this installation done over this summer so that it's ready for the start of preschool next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dixon? Not an ask for a motion? Okay. Any discussion?
I, I had a question. I just missed my, my, my button in time. Mr. Dixon, what's the lifespan of this? Like, how long do we intend that this restroom building, I'm not going to say portable, this restroom building is on site because we have the three portables that maybe we would have thought would have left our campuses this many years out from the pandemic, but they haven't because we have space and it's nice to have more space. So how long is the, is there a lifespan on this new building?
Yes. So the current plan, and that's what we laid out in the master plan as well, is that it would go away at the same time as those three portables. And that's when we build the new TK preschool building with the cafeteria that was shown in the master plan and do the modernizations necessary. That would be shooting for the next, not this coming summer, but the following summer.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. So the, the cost of the building is very minimal. It's about a couple thousand dollars of renting. We rent or lease that building per month. There is a delivery fee and it's usually around eight thousand dollars if I remember right, and that matches the hallway fee. Approximately, if I remember right. Yeah.
Four patty, it's an restroom building.
One of the restaurants that I attended, which was in my business, they, the last time they did renovations, they got two thousand dollars for for a long period of time.
Yeah.
We know, Mr. Dixon, that the height of the sinks and all of this has aged for young elementary.
Oh, it will be. Absolutely. Yeah. All of that you can, you can modify once it's in. It's really just coming with the infrastructure within the building. And then you connect it to your plumbing on the site. So the site work will connect with the plumbing and electricity that's brought to the building wherever the building is placed.
We, we provide and put our own fixtures in it?
No, it usually come with fixtures, but you can upgrade.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, it's almost any option you want within the building. It's just the site work, getting it connected to the site's utilities that we will have to do. It doesn't come with the building cost. We very much do. Yeah. Well, they're popular for the very purpose we're using them, which is temporary and to adapt for whatever program or interim housing that you, you need them for.
Reach that sink. So thank you for making sure the six-year-old reaches the sink.
We had one at Top of the World for the old CLC program. It was, it was fine. Okay. Oh, don't, don't worry. It's good. It's all good. So any more discussion or ready for the vote? Okay, student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? I oppose, carries five oh. Thank you. We now have moved to section 11, Consent Calendar. Do we have public comment on consent?
Yes, I have one speaker card for Michaela Martin. Michaela, if you want to come forward and just give us a minute, we'll get the timer set up. You have three minutes. And you'll get a little beep, I think at thirty seconds to start to wrap up. And you had on here, the topic within consent was First Five Orange County Funding?
Yes.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Michaela Martin, and I serve as the Policy and Government Affairs Manager for First Five Orange County. First Five Orange County is dedicated to improving the well-being of young children and families. As a little bit of background, we were established twenty-five years ago when the voters approved a portion of tobacco taxes to go specifically to zero to five program funding. We are the administrative, we're the public agency that is responsible for local funding and support of those programs within Orange County. I'm here tonight to thank you as you vote to accept funding from First Five Orange County. We're incredibly grateful for your continued partnership. As we are looking at entering the twenty-fourth consecutive year of contracting with each of the twenty-five kindergarten-serving school districts, wanted to just share a couple of highlights from the kindergarten readiness initiative. First, and I think the most exciting is the continuing community engagement. I know you all do Learning Link and, and some of the kindergarten readiness is supported through that. Our school districts have partnered, that have partnered with us, I apologize. It's been a really long day. Helped us reach over twenty-three thousand families across Orange County. The second highlight is about additional funding. We've been able to like match dollars within the county and help draw down over fifty million dollars annually from federal government to support school districts across the county. And then the third is the Early Developmental Index, which is the data that we utilize and we help sponsor, or we sponsor for all of the school districts to collect to find out how well our kids are prepared as they're entering kindergarten. So again, I'd like to thank you for your time and your continued partnership. We would not do this work without all of you. Together, we're making a lasting difference in the lives of young children and families across Orange County. I'd also like to thank your Director of Early Learning, Kim Johnson, who helps facilitate this work. So thank you again.
Thank you. And that's all the public comment we had on consent?
Yes, no, no further comments.
Okay. Do board members want to pull any items off of consent C through nine? Okay, then I would ask for a motion to approve consent calendar items C through, I didn't say nine. C through N, which starts, N starts with nine. Do I a second? Thank you. Our student vote. Board members all in favor? I opposed, carries five oh. Thank you. So we have governance. And we have board member reports.
Thank you, President Vickers. Victor, are you going to put the timer on for us? Let's see. Here we go. Oh, thank you for that nice note. A couple of things for fellow board members. President Vickers and I had the Aquatics Ad Hoc Subcommittee meeting on February 2nd. A couple of updates for you all. They have a tentative agenda item for March 12th for the city to be discussing that. So we look forward to feedback from them following that. We have asked for a public statement of their commitment or decision by March 31st. So we're expecting that as well. And they're aware of that and working towards that with their March 12th agenda item. And we also shared that board's majority of approval of the pool concept. So we reiterated that. And we shared some of staff's deadlines and dates. Notably, the RFPs are due on February 23rd. So city is very aware of, of our process and how it's moving forward. And they really appreciate that, you know, like we don't necessarily track city business in detail. So I think they really appreciate knowing where we are in each step of the process. We also had a LISO property ad hoc committee that was yesterday to kind of hear the city's vision for the LISO property. They shared they currently have seventy affordable units on the prior school property. It's just background knowledge for you guys. And they had done a feasibility study in 2023 to put thirty more units on the current city recreation property. So those are kind of the two things that they shared with us. We, we shared ideas back and forth on workforce housing and really just kind of did some brainstorming. So really productive meeting. And we're, we're in the process of scheduling a second ad hoc meeting on that. I also attended the city's Planning Commission meeting on February 7th. I gave a very specific public comment on the bike lane that's planned to go between basically our high school and our middle school, all the way up to Alto Laguna Boulevard. I put my support in for green paint. They have had it engineered without any green paint. And I think that there is way too much crossover between cars and bikes to not have green paint. And all of the planning commissioners seem to agree with that and run with it. So they are, basically the Planning Commission has authority. They approved it with the condition that it has some green paint. We'll see, the plans are out there. So if anybody's familiar with Park Avenue, you should look at the plans because you'll start to see where cars turning in and out of our Thurston driveways or maybe coming down closer to the highway or closer to the high school could be important. And then lastly, School Power, we've got the gala coming up. If anybody's going, feel free to reach out to me to see if we can help figure out who you'd like to sit with. We had the Barefoot, not the Barefoot, we had the Chef Challenge. That was really fun. So thank you, principals. You guys did a great job serving anybody, everybody. And we have the city's mayor luncheon coming up on Tuesday, April 2nd. So just a note for your datebook if you're interested in going. Thank you very much. I made it. Thank you for that timer.
He tested for us.
No, no report.
I attended the combined PTA meeting and I shared with you that, what I shared with them was about our budget, how we were right on track. And I also shared with them about the the plan that we passed tonight concerning safety. A big discussion, discussion item that came up was do they want to have one of us represented to each of the specific PTA boards? And overwhelmingly, they did not. They said that most of their meetings were an hour long and they had enough stuff on their own agendas. And they thought that my coming to the combined one was just fine. So it gets some of you off the hook as far as. Thank you.
Briefly, Chef Challenge, it was a blast as always. I also had some interactions with a parent group around the bike lane meeting. I never checked with you about whether they, I don't know if you were there, but yeah. I'm, I'm, I don't know if they made a public comment, but they, there were some, there was some interest in participating, at least with some sort of encouragement to do that. I also did the joint fiscal management meeting and the endowment meeting. And the general takeaway is that that the budgets in both are doing very well in this good economic moment we're living in. So those were great meetings to go to. That's it.
Thank you. I just, you guys indicated what I went to the same meeting as JFMC and the two subcommittees that Kelly mentioned. I would just comment that we did express to the city that how many years that we have collaborated with them on the shared use of facilities and that we certainly are interested in, in continuing on that path. So we are looking forward to what they will resolve at their, at their March meeting. And so it's, you know, subcommittee will report back to them and then the full council will make, we hope, some decisions on that date. But as Kelly mentioned, Mr. Dixon, the timeline is moving forward. We're moving forward. But as Kelly mentioned, Mr. Dixon, the timeline is moving forward. We're moving forward. As to, oh, they were just acknowledged for the high school. They had a couple of tough academic losses, academic, athletic, it's time to go home, right? Athletic losses in playoffs. Yeah. And they, I mean, the soccer team had to travel to Ventura, right? Yeah. So it's very difficult to, that's playoffs, though. They go far. As far as our government discussions, we'll be bringing those forward at different, at different points in, in meetings in the near future to discuss some of the protocol topics that we identified at our government session. So you can look forward to that. And we will be able to have it on the agenda so that we can have roundtable discussion of the things that were mentioned about the meetings. Thank you. Dr. Valoria?
Just something to keep an eye on is SB 897, Senate Bill 897. That's actually sponsored by Senator Newman, who's actually a local senator out of Fullerton. It's specific to the language on district of choice, which I know we talked a little bit about the other day. So as I said, that it sunshines out. And so there's also always questions as to whether it'll be reauthorized. They're looking at making some changes. So it was timely for us to talk about it. And I think, you know, probably a good idea for us to keep a real close eye on this as it moves through to see if and what changes, you know, happen. But other than that, I think it's been a good evening and lots of presentations. Please watch the video when you get a chance, not tonight because you're probably tired. But hopefully get a chance to watch the video and see all the great things that we have going on.
Thank you. I think it was, we had, I think it was a very robust meeting. Lots, lots of information provided to us. And I, again, appreciate the thoroughness of those reports. And ask for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Student vote? Thank you. Board members all in favor? I opposed. Thank you. Carrie's five oh.